You guys ready?
No, I don't think he's got digits yet.
See.
Oh, he's trying.
Yeah. So. We can't remove.
Good, I'm glad it has to be. Carry on.
How you doing? It's not too bad. See you. Yours almost up. A bunch of stuff that you can do. Say Luke.
Yes.
If you could get it on the other end for the audience.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think he's casting me.
He's got it up here.
Yes.
I press the right button. But even then, Eric, it's like no one wants to press. I'm.
There you go. There you go. Yeah. We have to go non digits. That one's working down here, right?
Ah, there you go. Technology working. Four times, I guess.
We're up.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. This is City Council Business Meeting for Thursday, May the 5th, 2022. It is 6:02 PM. Lindsey, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Baker. Reva.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mayor Tom Phillips.
I am here as well. We do have a forum. See, item number two on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and say Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Department of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under our God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of it? Okay, so we're going to remove item H. On the consent agenda.
There it did, didn't it? A new item H?
A different H.
Different H.
Okay. Not the H that I asked you to say.
Right, that's already gone.
New H. New H. The old H we had. This will be the second.
The second H. Oh, yeah, I bet. Okay, gotcha. And we're going to move item M to the cons- to the regular agenda.
We're moving both H and M to the regular agenda.
H is gone. We're removing H. We're going to move F.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like any of the other items moved to the regular agenda? Very nice. Can I get a motion, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion. Second, whatever.
Our. Motion by, briefly, seconded by, cool. All those a favor, I.
Hi.
All those supposed same. And motion carries. Item four, welcome guests and public comment. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's great to have people here participating in the government. At this point in time, we're going to open up the dais for any comment. Any that if people want to address the council for a non-agenda item. It's an agenda item. We just asked that you wait until the end. We'll give you three minute time limit. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would also be the time. Mr. Snell.
Hello.
Hi.
I just came tonight to introduce myself. I'm Mark Snell. I live at 196 Eightieth Avenue. It's a corner of Beardsley and Eightieth Avenue over in the northeast side of town. I just wanted to come by and introduce myself and say hi. Thank you for the good job and works that you're doing all the time. Very much pleased to see the activity going on Beardsley Avenue, in particular up here at Highway 28. And of course, going west, at some point in time, it'd be nice to address the east area, too. We've talked about it. But I just wanted to say that I'm running for the county supervisor's seat to represent Norwalk, Coming, and West Moynihan, Northwest Park County. And at this point, there's no one else running in that role. So I, I'm not sure what's going to happen there, but I welcome that opportunity to work with all of you at some point in the future and continue working on all the good things that happened here in Norwalk. Wish you the best of luck in all that you're doing. Looks like you've got a big agenda tonight, so good luck.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Jordan Hill, and I hope you've seen my signs around Norwalk. I am running for Warren County Recorder. I currently work at the Polk County Reporter's Office. I've been there almost eight years. I am the leader within the real estate department, and if you look at the reporter's budget and the money that the reporter takes in, which actually the reporter's office brings in about $300,000 a year. So we make money at the reporter's office. That money, the vast majority of it comes from real estate. So we have a very particular situation where Polly Wright is retiring after 16 years. Her first deputy just retired after 32. The next longest standing employee in the recorder's office will be about a year by the time the new reporter walks in. So I think it is incredibly important to get someone in that has an experience in recording itself. Aside from my work, I have been involved in specifically Norwalk community since I was 19 years old. At 19 years old, I joined the library board, and I was on there for a number of years until I moved to Coming, and once I was out of city limits, I had to drop that. I am on Norwalk hometown pride. I am a part of growing Norwalk. So my whole life really has been dedicated to Norwalk and its communities. My grandparents, Jim and Mary Kane, taught me from a very young age that community is very important. So I thank you guys for the opportunity. I have flyers. If anybody hasn't gotten one on their door, you just let me know, and I will hand those to you.
Jordan, can you state your address?
8988 Forty Second Lane. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Mark Reeser. I'm the president of Windsor Windows, and our building's located at 901 South Sunset Drive. Mayor and city council members, I'm speaking on behalf of Windsor and to express our appreciation to the city and several, several employees. When I initially viewed the Norwalk vinyl facility, when it was first hit by the tornado on March 5th, I really didn't have any idea if our employees inside at the time of the incident were safe. And yes, they were unharmed. To the extent of the damage to the building, the impact it had on our employees and the community. So then, over the next two months, several of the city, several from the city of Norwalk made the stress and pressure a little easier to bear. And getting back in the building more efficient and less traumatic. Fire Chief Jan Porter and her team made several visits to the facility and walked it with our team to understand our procedures and plans for fire safety, ensuring we were taking necessary precautions to keep people safe before, during, and after the repair in construction phases. Economic Development Director Holly Zychak was quick to offer suggestions and options. She also put me in touch with various government agencies, local businesses who offered assistance. And finally, I wanted to thank Chief Building Official Tony Stravers and his team. Tony made himself available to our team and visited the Windsor facility on numerous occasions alone and with other city employees. There were many emails, conversations, and site visits between our engineers, our general contractor, and Tony. He was easy to work with, transparent, and kept everything black and white. This helped us shorten our lead time, eliminate missteps and mistakes. Well, I feel these three individuals represent outstanding leaderships from the mayor, from city manager Luke Nelson, and from Community Development Director Luke Paris. The result is we can begin production on Monday, May 16th, much faster than we anticipated. I'm hopeful that my comments will resonate within the community that Norwalk has some very good people on staff. And our experience over the last 60 days further reinforces that we made a very good decision to build our facility in Norwalk. We're back in business. Thank you.
Right. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we will move on. Item five, proclamation. So we have five proclamations tonight for, one of them for Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15th through the 21st. We have National Public Works Week, May 15th to the 21st. National Police Week is May 15th to the 21st. Building Safety Month is May, all of May of 2022, and Economic Development Week is May 9th through the 13th. Item six is our consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have April 21st, 2022, minutes of regular city council meeting. Have expenditures, tax abatements, have renewal of Class C liquor license and Class B native wine permit for Windsor Pizza and Steakhouse. Have a renewal of Class C liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, and Sunday sales for Come and Go Number 240. Renewal Class C liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, and Sunday sales for Come and Go Number 28. We're going to set May 19th, 2022, for public hearing regarding the fiscal year 22 budget amendment. Have resolution approving payment to DeNoble Construction Services. Resolution approving payment to Windsor Windows for High Quality Jobs Program. We have resolution approving May 5th, 2022 Commercial Improvement Grant application for 1400 Sunset Drive, which is Young and Company Beauty. We have resolution to approve pay estimate number one to Sternquist Construction for Sunset Drive, Iowa Highway 28 and North Avenue Intersection Improvements Project. A resolution approving the Library Digital Sign CIP project to occur in fiscal year 23, and we have some correspondence. Can I get a mark?
Motion.
Okay, so motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Lindsey, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item seven, we have all the new business for consideration, discussion, possible action. Item A is resolution approving the site plan of Hughes Hartland Sportsplex. So the site plan has two sports fields, some pathways, parking lot concessions, and restroom for the sportsplex.
Um, just wanted to hit a couple things of note that were some intention areas that we called out when we were doing the PUD. Primarily, if you can go down to the landscaping plan, Luke, I think it's, uh, oh, page 12 and 13 of the agenda. We had mentioned in our PUD review that we wanted to pay some special attention to landscaping on the southern side of the site and the detention basin that's across the street. So you can see there, they've done a good job of loading that southern side with landscaping. And then that, that detention basin has a good buffer around it as well on the next page. Other just details in the packet, elevate architectural elevations for the concession stands meet our architectural requirements. There's some other details on the dugouts, backstops. There's some kind of shade coverings that they're going to install, things that we want it typically have as elevation cementals, but are included in the packet, just so you get a better idea of what some of the amendees provided will be. That happy to take any other questions?
Comments, county, public comments? Very nice. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Lindsey, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Now, we're going to back up and do the consent agenda item M that I forgot to do. So resolution approving design engineering services for Merle Huff Avenue Drainage Improvements. At yours, Wayne.
Yes. You happy to answer questions?
I'm sorry. I didn't get a chance to talk to you until now. So could you just, I mean, $48,000 for engineering. Could you please give me a little bit of background? Is there only one house that is impacted? Is it impacted because of development? Has this been going on since the house was built?
Yep, so the flooding, all this has come about because of the, of the development north of there, where it sounds like the flooding has occurred previously before, prior to the development. The home is the one at the corner during, the modeling showed during five year rain events that home would flood. And meetings with the homeowner confirmed that, that they had flooding up. They haven't had it in their house, but they've had it up their patio door.
So it is flooded as a result of Hughes Crossing, or it's?
It's flooded previously, before the development.
Okay, because it's coming off farmland, or because it's coming out of our drainage facility?
It's essentially a blew the modeling, the engineers blew it because of farmland.
Okay.
Because there's no detention on farmland. So if there's a 10 year event, has that farmland 10 year event of rain comes off it? With the development now, it's going to be better. They, the modeling shows that it won't flood now for five year events. It'll be like a 25 year event, the house will still flood.
So. So. If it was farmland, it wouldn't have been the city's responsibility to fix it. And now there's development that's going to actually make it less. I'm just, I'm just trying, for $48,000 for, for a home, and I sympathize. I wouldn't want my house flooded there. But if this has been happening for a long time, I mean, which came first, the, the city drainage facility there or the house? I mean, is it, is this something new? Because once you do the 48,000 worth of engineering, the fix is probably going to be many multiples of that. So I'm just wondering, at what point does it make sense to maybe look at different options?
That's what we're hoping the study's going to do. The problem they're going to do is modeling on it, because the problem we have is we don't want to move the problem from there downstream to Park Hill. You know, we've discussed, discussed that on other projects where we want to make sure we're not just moving the problem down. So the modeling, that's not all design engineering. That's some modeling involved that as well. As far as the history, I mean, I think this has been going on before I came here, from what I understand. The mayor, I know I met with him, and Luke did.
It's not just one house. It does affect all the houses down the road.
Yeah, clear down set. So there's a drainage way behind the houses on 17th Street. It, it, those get pretty bad as well. Water, water up into the yard.
I remember right, a few years ago, quite a few years ago now, but the city made an improvement, tried to make an improvement to upsize the drainway in that area. Am I right?
I think that was, I think that was down Merle Huff a ways.
Further over.
Yeah. One, yeah, one drainage corridor to the east, we've put in some drain tile in that corridor. The reason this comes up now is when the development was under design, we've asked them to take a critical eye how it impacts everybody downstream, so they don't come back and say, your development caused us, you know, flooding. But then they brought to light that it floods today, the home floods today, and then after reading with homeowners, they confirmed it, which I was not aware of that.
So the purpose of this then is to study that cold issue all the way up and down through that drainway?
They're going to resolve the flooding of this. We want to resolve the flooding of this house at this location, but they're going to model it to make sure they're not just going to flood another one downstream. There's more issues downstream that we need to resolve. But the work will, if work occurs, it'd be just that just street.
So there's, there are more problems already that we know?
Well, down at Park Hill, there's just not enough storm sewer and intakes there. Part of, not all, that goes from Cherry Parkway by the post office. That's where that drainage watershed begins. You know, Cherry Parkway floods, that's, these are all related to each other. There's not enough storms that were there.
So would it make sense to have the engineer study more than just this?
It's in the CIP July 1. That's, they're going to start doing that.
So this is in addition to what's in the CIP?
Correct.
Wouldn't you have more efficiency though, if you just did it all at the same time? I mean, could you, could you add whatever's happened here in July CIP, just add this part to it?
Yeah, certainly could.
I mean, would, would it be more efficient or more cost effective is my question. It seems like we're, we're just taking an isolated, the, the way the, the agenda statement read, we're doing all this for the benefit of one house, which I didn't understand, because the house has been there for years, and so has the changes. Again, I just didn't understand.
Yeah. So the reason this is forward today, I think we just felt some urgency with the development occurring, nor that we just wanted to get the problem resolved as soon as we could. Knowing that it's been that condition for a long time, that I don't see tremendous, you know, concern waiting till July 1.
I, I would echo Stephanie's request, if that's what it is, that we just add this to, to what we've already got planned to do. Because if they're going to be out in the field studying everything else, it seems like just putting this end on, it would be cheaper than $48,000 for a separate report and modeling. I agree.
Okay.
Probably give you a more effective assessment.
Wayne, did any portion of what they included in that scope of services include any preliminary design of the anticipation of a covert?
There we come on, the scope is there are a couple of three design options for remedying the problem. One of them's going to be a covert. No one's probably going to be different intake combinations from the road south, and the third may be what we discussed as modifications to the home. So it's modeling and then preliminary, and then a meeting with us, so you're going to present council and then preliminary design of that third option.
So those options would also include cost estimates? Because if it, depending on if it's impacting one home, that's, we have a numerous options to compare costs to.
So, so I go back to the question, which came first, the drainage system for the house?
Positive drainage, right? We probably graded it.
So whoever built the house didn't adequately account for how that lot drained?
Or the engineers at the time did not give them very good advice to say, don't build here.
Okay, so, so this is kind of before.
Several places in the city.
Yeah. And it came up, the farm. On the east side here, I can't think what the name of it is. And it is one of those things that, you know, if the city is going to fix, I don't know if it's the city's responsibility to fix lots that weren't constructed adequately. I mean, I, I think that the homeowner bears responsibility for doing that, and they're, they're building their engine.
I, I would agree with that, but I think if, if we take a look at it as, you know, that whole drainage area, right? To me, that brings a different perspective to it, because then we're talking across several properties, you know, in kind of a collective drainage system.
But it sounds like the drainage system was there before any of those houses were there.
Oh, yeah.
Was it the same developer that developed all of them?
I, I don't know. I wasn't here then. But I, to me, the, the way I would look at it is the city should be involved in it if it's something that cuts across several property lines, and it's something that's a collective drainway, you know, waterway, right? If, and I agree with you that if it's something the result of what the property owner did or didn't do, right? I don't see a need for all the taxpayers to pay for this. What they've got going.
And I could see if, if it was the city, if the city installed a drainage system that was not adequate or, or it was a fault in its construction, I could see us paying to fix it, but if it's, the city put in what they put in, and then the homeowners need to build accordingly. That's, that's why it doesn't make sense to make it do that.
Stephanie, just, just for clarification, so part of what the study's going to do is help us identify if there's solutions, responsibility level. This, the engineering component will give us more information to make that decision. So I just want to make sure I understand. Are you talking about this component waiting until July 1? Or are you talking not doing the study at all?
Oh. Yeah. Yeah, I, I am too. I am, I'm concerned about the precedent that this sets. I'm also concerned about other areas in the city where I know there have been requests of the city to address drainage, and it has been said, not our problem. And so I'm trying to understand, why is this one our problem when none of the others have been? And like your neighbor, for instance, and, and maybe you too, I don't know, but I know there's a significant drainage issue with your neighbor. There was for a long time a significant drainage issue on Lakewood Drive that was only fixed when the streets were reconstructed, and the homeowners paid a significant portion of that. So I mean, I just, I don't, I'm sure there are countless other places. So I'm just trying to figure out why this area is something we need to.
One unique component of this is that is a city owned drainage way in the back. I think some of those other examples where there are easements across private property. This drainage way is city owned. That may make it unique.
And this is somewhat similar to what we did a little bit further east. Part of the study that they're talking, so both, is the, they did the study that resulted in us doing improvements. This is the Hughes Residential Development. And we did improvements of underground storm sewer work through this area just recently, which again, the similarity here to this project is that, that is all on city owned stormwater drainage area. And the other ones that I'm thinking of, the one over near the Orchard Hills area, that stream that was starting to cut into some of those backyards, that's all private, as well as the one, is it off of High Road? The one it was a, with Mid AM, they had a hole there as well, that all that.
Holly.
Holly Drive.
Yes.
Both that I recall, both of those are private property. And I think, Mayor, I don't know, it's in your neighbor's drainage issue. I think that's also private property.
But, okay, so this is my ignorance. I don't. We're talking about a home that's flooded, which seems to me to be private property. I, I guess I just don't know enough to understand that.
What I'm hopeful, for the city's best case scenario, the study results in them showing us that it was designed appropriately. It handles a appropriate storm event, and maybe they come back and they say the elevation of the basement is too low, and it is a private party issue. On the other hand, they could come back and say, well, according to drainage in the area, you need additional culvert. That's appropriate for the city to do. But the size that culvert is causing backup that then causes the flooding, which we potentially may have some liability.
You brought this forward tonight because you thought the timing is at the essence, basically, right?
I believe there's value if the city wants to do it. The sooner we do it, the better.
But your intention is to take a look at that whole system. That's what's in the CIP.
Yep, correct.
When is that supposed to happen? The, looking at the whole system with, through the CIP.
In fiscal year 23, we have a project to, it's essentially to remedy the flooding that occurs on Cherry Parkway and adding and that the preliminary thought is there's not enough storm sewer anywhere in this whole neighborhood, and that's what causes the backups.
Okay, but more specifically, do we have a time in fiscal year 23 that we're expecting it to happen?
July 1. Soon thing, we can start a contract.
Your 23 is July 1 of 22.
Correct.
Which is two months, May, June? I mean, I, I guess I just go, okay, if, if we have to do it, I'm still not understanding, but I'll defer to you to do, then what difference does two months make?
Wayne, would it make sense for you to be getting the contracts and bids for that today for your July, and so they can start July 1?
For the design of it?
Although for your, your next study. Instead of doing this, get, get it all together into one thing that's part of your CIP project.
We can do that.
So they can start July 1.
Right.
Possibly even late June. I mean, if they're, start late June, they're not going to fit it till, or bill us until July.
That may give us more time just to discuss if, you know, what improvements council's comfortable with, comfortable with proceeding. That may give us more time just to discuss if, you know, what improvements council is comfortable with, comfortable with proceeding, moving forward.
Yeah, that would also let you understand impacts of different things in the whole system, you know?
Can I move to table this?
Yes, you can.
Is that an appropriate response? I would move to table this until Wayne brings it back.
In addition to that, to see if we can get an opinion on a legal liability to the city in addition.
So is that?
So.
So I just amended your motion.
And I second her amendment.
A motion and a second, motion by Livingston, second by Reba. And I have an amendment by Reba and a second by Livingston. The amendment is to. Also request legal advice as far as what the city's liability is. So can I get a voice vote on the amendment? All his favor, I. I was going to say, that motion carries. Can I, so, is there any further discussion on the resolution to table? All right, Lindsay, would you call a role in that?
Yes, Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. Item seven B, we'll get back on track here. Uh, it's resolution approving the site plan of legacy commercial plat ten lot two. So this site plan is for building between Justin Dentistry Building, the new Justin Dentistry Building and the Pizza, where the Pizza Hut is. It looks like this is gonna, building's gonna have a drive-through on the south end of the building and it's almost a clone of the first building.
That hits all of it. Um, I would note, um, when the first building came through, um, the second building was shown kind of as a site plan option. They didn't build that at that time. So due to kind of our lag time with site plan review, we're having them resubmit it, um, with all the details updated. Site plan, uh, landscaping plan, um, architectural elevations there at the end, all meeting our code requirements. So happy to answer your questions. I believe the engineer for the project is here as well.
Question. So whoever's driving the main screen, you can go down to the next, the last, I think it's page twelve. The elevation. Okay, what does that mean? It's non-compliant? Because I'm sensitive to this given we've just had two. Projects that we said had to change.
Sixty-seven percent one and two and thirty-three percent class three. Um, it has to do with the size of the windows. It's basically the same design as the, the previous building. They were just putting smaller windows in. So from our opinion, it kind of meets the intent of the code, um, rather than having them change the design of the building. We've done that on other projects where things are, you know, consistent in the design style, but, um, close in the percentages.
So compliant would be seventy and thirty?
Seventy-five and twenty-five.
Were the windows this way because of the activity that goes on inside the building or?
Uh, I guess I'd defer to the engineer on that. I do not know specifically.
Is, is the first building same thing? Is the first, is the first building?
No, the first building was compliant.
So how does this one, if it's the same building, be?
The windows are small.
Windows count as compliant?
Yes, windows are class one materials. So because windows are smaller, the overall percentage.
Perhaps the engineer could inform us.
Oh, come on up.
Dick Becker, McClure Engineering Company, thirteen sixty North, one twenty-first Street. Um, I'm the civil on the project, not the architect, so I do not know the answer to this. Believe it is the, uh, the smaller windows, it just messes with the percentages.
All right.
So everything else about it is the exact same as the other building.
Right, but you don't know why the windows need to be small?
I do not know that, sorry.
And this is the side that faces highway twenty-eight?
Western elevation, no, that would be the side that faces, uh, the backside. So the east. Apparently both say west elevation. The. The very bottom one is the east elevation. It's labeled west elevation, but the drive-through is on the left side of the building.
Okay, so if the bottom one's the east elevation, that is the one that fronts highway twenty-eight.
Correct.
And that's the one that's not compliant.
And that's what it is.
That one is compliant.
It's the west elevation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So putting smaller windows in the back.
So, so I guess I want to understand, and I, I understand that you can't answer that today, I respect that. I want to understand why. I just, I, I don't understand why. I want to know why it needs to be non-compliant when exactly as Stephanie said, we required some other places that recently. To change what they were doing because it was not compliant. I don't, without an explanation as to why it needs to be, I'm not in favor of it.
You want me to take a guess?
No, thank you.
It wouldn't be because it's cheaper with it.
No, uh, I think it's due to the proximity to the, uh, residential. It's now to the west of it. It wasn't there before on the previous building.
Correct.
I think that was planned as commercial at the time. Uh, but now with residential being on the west side, maybe the thought is maybe a little smaller windows. Just the, I say some light pollution, that sort of thing. Cause that's the only thing that's changed since.
So would you like to table this so we can get the answer on it?
I would, second.
So I got a motion table, uh, from Reba, second by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call a role?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester? Reba?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, all right.
You know, before we leave this topic, Mayor, I would just like to point something out. Can you bring that picture back up? The one that showed the layout of the streets and stuff.
Apologize for making anybody, everybody dizzy while I get there. Which one, Ed?
The one that shows the layout of the streets. Nothing to do with this building. Yeah, up one more maybe. Keep going up.
More zoomed out?
There you go, that one. Okay, now, the, the only reason I bring this up, and I think it's great that they're doing this, I'm in favor of this. And I think that location will probably work out pretty doggone good. It connects all those front lots as well. My concern is, okay, on this private street, we've inherited a terrible situation on the north end of that. The drive-through bank window and the garbage collection, uh, point right there.
And the general overall structure of that road.
And this is going to increase the traffic on it. I know it will. Now, the, this, this traffic previously was just on the front end of this, but now it's going to be up here and it's going to, you know. Take the full length and the full load. We need to figure out a way. We need to figure out a way to, to get this fixed, right? And I've talked with the other, some of the other business owners up in that area and it's a, it's problematic.
So, so they just changed up by the. They just changed all that.
They did, they, they moved that island.
They, they've made it narrower, made the drive-through narrower.
That's right.
To happen, they made the drive wider through there too.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So what other fixes are you asking for?
I guess what, what I would like to see is there not a way to be able to move that garbage containment unit. Right there, okay? And to bring this street in and line this up. With, um, with the new changes they've made below that island. You know what I'm saying? To make it, to make it a smooth way through.
I guess part of it is, is I actually like having obstacles in the way to slow people down because it's a private drive, it's not a road, right?
Well, there's plenty of obstacles, David, because when this truck is unloading right here. And somebody's coming out of that drive-through and coming head on as you're coming down that street, right? And then you take that.
Street, let's clarify this, it's not a street. Private drive.
Well, there's a few of us up here that aren't real enthusiastic about private streets when they're, when they're passers.
Regardless of what you call them.
It's, it's a drive, it's, it's a big parking lot.
We inherited this situation. I think it's bad and I think we should take a look at some kind of a way to get that fixed up. I realize it's private property and I realize those people own those sections of that street, so we got various owners up there. But that's a bad situation. Anyway, thanks, Mayor.
Item seven C, it's a public hearing regarding conference plan amendment to change the future land use of approximately ten acres of land west of Shadow Creek, the state's south. Of Beardsley Street from medium density residential to high density residential. Welcome up public hearing at six forty-one PM. I am going to let Luke explain why this update to the comp plan is the.
Sure thing. So this item is related to the, uh, public hearing and consideration of the PUD. Which would be the next couple items after this. Um, Jerry's Homes approached us, um, after purchasing that property. With, um, some development plans and ideas. Um, one of the things that they were looking to do is, um. A condo project that is shown in the area of parcel A on the map up on the screen, um, it's approximately ten acres. What they proposed to us in their plans was a two-story condo product. That would, uh, end up being a density of around nine point six homes per acre. One of the first things we do when we do a pre-app meeting with anyone is we look at what they're doing and compare it to our future land use plan. Um, our future land use plan in this area is medium density residential. It states that, uh, you can have up to twelve homes per acre, uh, in a medium density area. So the density of what they're wanting to do, uh, met that. The other thing our land use plan talks about is the typical expected uses in each, in each, uh, district. Um, in the medium density district, it talks about single-family homes, duplexes and townhomes. And it does not mention anything like a condo apartment vertically attached unit. Because of that, we suggested that if they wanted to pursue such, um, units, that they should request a comprehensive plan change to high density. That would allow for that vertically attached unit. So that's, that's what this first item is about. It's really just focusing on those ten acres. And if a condo product at a medium density residential, uh, nine point six, uh, homes per acre. Would be, uh, an acceptable thing for that area. Um, we did take it to our planning zoning commission like we always do. They reviewed the, uh, proposal, um, at their last two meetings. Um, they ultimately recommended approval. They did add a couple of conditions in their approval. Um, one, they were not comfortable with just saying, this area is okay for high density. Because our high density area technically allows up to eighteen homes per acre. So, you know, they, they really wanted to, to put that limit of medium density on that. So one of the recommendations is that, uh, if it gets switched to high density residential, it has a density cap of twelve homes per acre. The other condition they had was they wanted it to, uh, they really wanted to make sure that two-story thing was important. That it not go up to three stories. And so there, they added a condition that, uh, it be a two-story maximum. On any units and buildings that were built in there. Um, and all of that was on condition that a PUD was brought forward to, uh, to propose those two elements. So really trying to lock it into what the developer was proposing on the next item, rather than having a ten-acre, uh, high-density piece. Just sitting out there in the city if the PUD happened to not go forward, or if someone else happened to buy that area. So happy to take any questions.
So, so it's currently medium up to twelve per acre?
Correct.
If the comp plan changes to high density and the PUD does not go forward. What's the legal recourse on stopping apartment buildings for being pulled?
The conditions that P and Z wanted to put in there is exactly why they, they put those conditions. So their condition was.
They put it in the PUD.
No, um, their recommendation to you all on this comp plan amendment was under the condition that a PUD was brought forward. That limited it to twelve homes per acre and, uh, two-story buildings.
So what if the PUD does not go forward and Jerry's Home sells it to somebody else?
Then they would have to bring a PUD forward that has condos that meet that same requirement, or we would deny any other PUD. If they want someone to bring a PUD forward with eighteen units per acre apartments. It would, it wouldn't meet the condition of that land use plan change.
Can you do that? My question, well, the underlying comp plan would be changed at that point in time. So was there a recommendation to change comp plan contingent upon approval of the U D?
Yes, essentially.
So council would have to be happy with the current PUD.
So we'd have to decide. We'd almost have to decide the PUD before we rezone it, given no circumstances.
PUD is rezoning, so change the comp on your, I think you're going to want to be confident on all the issues. You're not inclined to want the PUD, probably don't want to do the comp plan change.
Can I get a better, um. Explanation? I was going to ask you for better understanding, but that's on me. Can I get a better explanation for why we need to change the comp plan? What I heard was, but they want to do fits in the current comp plan, it just fits better some, in a different, better organization.
So the comp plan has two checks that we have to do. One is a density check and that's a purely numbers thing. And this one beats that density check. The other one is what is the type of product they're proposing? And this condo product does not meet the medium density typical use checkbox. So to be able to approve a PUD that would have a condo product, we need to say, this is a high-density area. Which allows for condos. Did that do better?
I understand. The planning and zoning commission have a reason for approving a density of. Four units per acre when in fact the proposed project is.
They did discuss that. Um, I think they ultimately ended up with the medium density allowed twelve units per acre. So that's what they decided to just say.
I didn't, I didn't see a specific recommendation that it, and now we go force somebody to build condos. That, so it could be apartments if we did this. It could be apartments at twelve minutes per acre.
Per, per the P, per the P and Z's recommendation, yes. Um, their recommendation was to the twelve units per acre. Yeah. They decided to recommend what the, what the maximum density that the medium density district would typically allow.
I'm having problems with parcel A, figuring out exactly what could be pacing, I mean, it's going to be as high as a two-story house. If they had it, our. I mean, it's gonna be as high as a two-story house if they had it, our, or, or one or whatever, two, three. It wouldn't be any higher than a two-story home.
Correct.
Right? So there's, there are units facing, basically, but it looks like, I keep trying to make this bigger and I can't use that screen.
Luke, can you, can you zoom in on parcel A? Thank you.
So it appears that there's storm water management facilities in the front and the back of the lot. And I was wondering, so exactly how close are these buildings going to be? Because you have a stormwater pond, it looks like, right in the middle where it appears there would be-
Yes, so um, prior to that, they, they did, I believe, in some of the information they sent, uh, Luke that I forwarded to you, I think they did um, give us a layout of where the buildings would be. But essentially, the building would be lengthwise on that first um, lot that has the stormwater detention along it. But um, basically, the building facade would be uh, I would assume 10 to 15 feet away from the edge of that blue line. They're not gonna want the building facade to be right against the, the thing. Again, this is not an engineered design, but you know. But yeah, so essentially what you'll have is a detention basin along there that encompasses maybe the first third of whatever that lot would be. And then the building would sit somewhere in the center of that lot. Again, they would not wanna have it right up next to the detention basin. So we would assume there would be uh, some kind of additional separation.
So potentially there could be a, a two-story just straight wall like the brownstone of legacy or like what's being built right now in Shadow Creek.
Correct. Yes. Yep.
What, what's going on in parcel B? I don't see in there.
Parcel B will, would be the townhome area in the PUD. That would be uh, straight medium density as allowed by the comp plan right now.
Okay, so these are not, those do not contain the two-story structures that everybody's concerned about?
Correct. I mean, they, I'm assuming they would be two-story townhomes, but they would not be the condo um, unit that would have somebody living on the first floor and then somebody different living on the second.
Okay, so the condos are confined to parcel A?
Correct.
And so we can't make that happen with the PUD without doing a land use change?
Some, man, you wanna make a land use plan change. Based off of previous history of how we've done with, dealt with other projects, we've made land use plan changes to that respect.
I don't like the change to the land use plan. I'm not necessarily opposed to their proposal, but I'm not in favor of the land use. So I'm trying to figure out if there's some way that we can, that for me, I can agree to what they want without changing the land use. That's my, legally speaking, then we do that.
I, I think we need to change the comprehensive plan. As our zoning is being compliant with the comprehensive plan and if there is a fault or if we don't do that, it does leave an area, I think the developers want that changed also because uh, it does leave it open for challenging court where someone's coming to argue, hey, that was, that zoning change is contrary to the conference plan.
That's what I needed to know.
You said that better, Jim. Thank you.
Well, okay. Remind me what the difference is between a vertically attached unit and a horizontally attached unit? Because you're saying that these are vertically attached. To me, that's, that's more like a townhome, whereas a horizontally attached would be more like a condo.
So think about where the, the wall separation between units is at. Horizontally attached, um, my wall is vertical, but my units are horizontally next to each other. So that, that's the horizontally attached. That's your townhome. Your vertically attached would be, I'm on the main floor and then one guy lives above me and then another guy lives above me, you know, however tall the building you wanna build, so.
Okay, so it would, would a better amendment to the comp plan be to allow vertically attached condominiums in medium density?
That would, yeah, that would be another way to look at it, yes.
True. That, that way we don't get into a, to an apartment building going in. Right. A full, a full-blown apartment.
A vertically attached condominium, so what are you saying? You don't want separate ownership on upstairs or downstairs? I mean, that's, that's a horizontal property. You talk about horizontal, horizontally attached. It's based upon Iowa law, which, under what's called a horizontal property. Those things originally started, uh, like, picture more of an apartment building, high-rise apartment building. People wanted to buy individual apartments going up. Traditionally, when you buy real estate, you buy the ground, you buy the building on it, you buy it all in style with um, the core of the earth, right? And you own that. You've got the title and that entire parcel property, right? So at least uh, when people started wanting to buy individual portions of a building, that's why they call it a horizontal property regime, because you're dividing it horizontally. So you're not just vertically within that box of where the real estate is underneath. They divide the ownership between every floor, all the way up and down. And our, our recorder people can tell you that uh, you know, when, when they file that with the recorders office, you end up getting the style pack of that thing because not only do they have to have the legal description, they have to file a plan for every individual unit within those units, within those horizontal property regimes. Because people are just owning the area within the walls. So they could describe it. They've gotta give a complete plan of those areas with the walls. So when you, when you're talking about horizontal attachment, I mean, it's, there is some-
There's a horizontal property machine and a vertically attached.
Yes, that's, that's very confusing. The, the, the legal mechanisms create a condo. Jim is correct. It's called a horizontal property regime. Our zoning terminology, when we talk about separation of units, is the exact opposite. My apologies for that being confusing.
And some townhomes can be still condominiums. Yes. I mean, because they'll, sometimes developers will actually own the underlying real estate completely. And then you stick a building on, they'll still call it a horizontal property because they're not owning the ground down, you know, underground all the way inside.
Jim, you hear what the mayor wants to accomplish and what I want to accomplish? What do we call that? How, how do we, how do we term that to get what we want and not something else?
What do you want? Do you want the separate, I mean, I'll go back to my initial question.
I am fine with this plan.
Okay.
But not, I'm not fine with changing it to a high density.
Right.
So-
So how come, what, what do we call it to let this happen without calling it high density?
We would have to allow something in R3.
Yeah, you, you can change the definition under R3 to clarify that, that type of a building sits under R3 as long as it matches density, yes.
So we'd have to have that change made before we approve this, otherwise it's grandfathered, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just going to, yeah. Can I jump in for a second? I, I know we've got a number of adjacent property owners who are supposed to have a public hearing. I'm getting a, a little bit concerned that we're talking so much about that product that's gonna be on that lot, information that's gonna be shared with you, I'm sure, from some property owners, there's some things to look at. But I know that gets ahead of the comp plan, so I'm wondering if-
Well, I think the uh-
But, but this and the comp plan are so intertwined that it's, it's hard to separate too.
I would believe the, the main thing to, when we, when we start talking and um, having uh, Jerry's Homes and their representatives talk and the uh, adjacent property owners, I think the main thing to just remember is that we're talking about parcel A. There are other aspects about this. There's, there's the park component, there's the single-family component, there's townhome component. Right now, we're talking about parcel A, 10 acres. The other 70 acres is all compliant with our comp plan. Uh, we don't have to have a change with that. So um, I think you can, you can have a discussion about what those units might look like. I think Jerry's Homes has prepared what some examples might look like and that can all be shared under this, because I think that's all germane to the decision on where do we end up with this.
We're in the public hearing right now. Right. The purpose of the public hearing is to get council to gather facts and uh, what they feel they need, or the commission they feel they need to make proper decisions. Part of that is getting some other questions out right now to get some of the basics answered. Also, definitely part of the meeting is taking inputs from-
And Mayor, I was sent several uh, items, some pictures, some maps, so I can show those up on the screen as different people wanna talk about those items.
I guess the question though is, do we need to be able to dispense this topic before we can move on to the next? Or does the next one inform this one? You know, procedurally, how can we do this?
The, this would inform the next one. So we wanna have a definitive resolution of this.
Okay, so I, I, I'm not so sure that I particularly care for this layout that you presented before, but that's neither here nor there. So if I introduce a motion to accomplish what you and the mayor were discussing, right?
We're still in a public hearing.
Right now, we're in the public hearing.
Well-
And what you're considering right now, the only motion we can make is regarding change to the comprehensive plan, not PUD. So once the public hearing is done, you gathered your information, well, then the council will be presented with-
Which brings me to my question.
With the question.
And my question was gonna be, do we need to change the definition for uh, the medium density, right? To include this type of structure? Would that be the way to approach it? And then we wouldn't have to, could we approach it that way? And then we wouldn't have to change the zoning on this at all?
Well, you, you would have to change the comprehensive plan.
Okay, alright.
On comprehensive plan.
Right.
But you wouldn't be able to change that definition at all at the time. I mean, it's a whole new change of our whole ordinance is basically saying, under R3, we're gonna allow this type of-
We can- It's not a part of zoning, it's part of top, right? As far as the, what type of building goes in this particular, or is that part of the zoning order?
It's, it's both.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this would be a two-part operation?
Yes.
If you wanted to go around it that way without changing the comprehensive plan.
And to, to the point about allowing a certain unit in the R3 district or whatever, since this is a PUD, you're talking about what are the specifics of this parcel of ground? And so it doesn't have to be specific to R3 or R2 or whatever, you know, you can say, this is, you know, I believe we've turned it R4, but then we put all these restrictions in that said, two-story, all this. And again, we're getting to the PUD stuff, so we'll cover that when we get to it. But um, we don't necessarily have to do a wholesale change to our entire zoning ordinance since this is a PUD. That's the kinda elegant thing about a PUD is you can tailor restrictions to a very specific piece of ground through that process.
But if we wanna go that route though, I mean, they get in compliance with comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Plan says R3, and we're saying R3 does not allow this type of use. Of all R3 regulations, so if we want to allow it with R3 without doing comprehensive plan, we probably have to change our zoning ordinance quickly.
The, I didn't, I, I, I didn't say that the comprehensive plan has to, that has to match with R3. Um, we're, we're not talking about zoning right now. What, what's not matching with the current comprehensive plan is the typical use. So if you, if you pulled up our comprehensive plan right now, maybe that is something you can pull up, Luke, on that thing. It lists typical uses, what you would expect in this, this district. And then it lists densities. And the density that they're proposing is what we would expect there. The type of building that they are proposing is not what we would expect there. We would tend, our, our plant, plans as we would expect to see that as a high-density product. Okay, so that's where the disconnect is. It doesn't have anything to do with zoning right now. Once we determine how we wanna rectify that, if we wanna rectify that, and we gotta hear from a lot of folks before we make that decision, then we can see how do we tweak our zoning to make that work, right? One thing to do would be to potentially, yes, go back and do a wholesale change to the R3 zoning. But if you were to say, hey, let's allow a condo product as medium density at a certain density level in here, that doesn't mean that it still does, wouldn't necessarily have to be classified R4 zoning, right? Because the, the, the use type of condo would be R4 over here, but now medium density over here in the land use plan.
That's part of what's confusing me is terms like typical and expected because those don't sound like an exhaustive.
They're-
Those don't sound limiting. So that's why I'm, I, and maybe that's just my issue. Typical and expected are not-
That is one of the things with the land use plan is it's meant to be vague like that.
Okay, so then I, again, I go back to, why is this excluded? What excludes it from typically and expected?
It, it, just any more, any individual's interpretation, I suppose. Prior to our Highland Point project that we had come forward, I would have been of the opinion professionally that the comprehensive plan has fuzzy lines. And sometimes you can say, an apartment complex can go in an area that we said was gonna be offices for high dense, for, for land use. In that project, we said, no, we really wanted to change that to high density because apartments weren't office. When this project was brought to us, uh, knowing that, that's how we treated the, the previous project, we said, it's not literally what is in the plan. So since it's not literally what's in the plan, we're suggesting that you change it. I still think that there are fuzz, there's fuzziness in uh, comprehensive plans. There, it's intended to be that way. This, this entire site is 80 acres of medium density. No one would ever expect there to be 1,200 townhomes built in that area. Technically, the comprehensive plan would allow that, but it's fuzzy. You know, we, we expect there to be some single-family in those areas. We expect things like that. So I, I know that that's not the definitive language that you maybe want.
That's helpful because I certainly want to comply with what we are legally required to comply with. But I don't see that this is outside of what we are legally required to comply with that. And so I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to understand why we need to make a change when it is not excluded. It just, I mean, to me, that just seems simpler. And if I'm wrong, I would understand that I'm wrong. I'm just not hearing that I'm wrong. I'm just hearing it's not what we usually do.
It's, there isn't a bright line, okay? The city council as a legislative body, make decisions and findings. I mean, you make zoning changes, you make a finding that's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, staff has made a recommendation on how we feel you would want, what you would need to make that determination as to compliance with the comprehensive plan. The stricter interpretation has been what council's kind of been pushing. There's this flexibility. And, and so I think uh, staff's recommendations were tried to, trying to be in compliance with the more stricter interpretations so the council can make those decisions versus staff coming and saying, well, it's all fuzzy and having a council member saying, well, why it's fuzzy? I want a bright line.
I understand and respect that. I laugh, Jim, because I don't think, as a rule, council is trying to be more strict. We find exceptions every chance we can.
Yeah.
So my observation of how this council functions is a little bit different than your observation or your characterization just there about how this, when it, when it suits some people, then we are very strict. And when it doesn't, then we're not. That is part of my frustration with this. I'm, 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 to, don't mean to raise my voice.
Yeah. But the council certainly has the ability without this change, you know, without this change to say, hey, it's zoning changes in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, it's clear where I sit on it. I don't know if it's clear where anybody else sits on it.
Can we see what the existing future land use plan looks like? Because I can't, I couldn't, I looked and looked and looked, I couldn't find it. And it was on my computer, my own-
Future land use plan, the one that is in draft format?
No, the existing one. I found the draft one, but not the existing.
Check, chapter five. If you go to the Norx webpage and go to Planning and Zoning Commission's page, or if you go to Community Improvement Plans, it's there. I don't know why it's not showing up there. I don't know if it's frozen or what. And then uh, there's resources on the right-hand side and it'd be called Chapter Five Land Use- And then there's resources on the right-hand side, and it'd be called Chapter Five Land Use Plan Update, I think. Something like that. Oh, it's not sharing.
It'll, I'll, as soon as it pops up, I'll. People get dizzy watching.
No, that's fine. I was like, I thought it was frozen.
Twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, Chapter Five Amendment, no?
Yes, that's the correct one. So if we scroll down here, so this is going to be our land use chapter. It's going to talk about. All of our land use stuff, our existing land uses. It's going to have our land use plan map. So that's our existing map. It's going to have our future map. And then it's going to have a one-page section for each. For each land use category. So if you keep going down, that's talking about kind of some existing things. Until you get to the future land use map, and then the chapter should be after the, no, I was wrong. Okay. So go back up one page. So you can see there, medium-density residential, it talks about general purpose, then we have a thing of the, of typical uses. Talks a little bit about, you know, things you want to consider that are kind of pertinent to any development, slopes, topography. Amendments, those types of things. And then it has buildable lot policies and densities. So there, that's really the checks we're doing are the twelve units per acre check and then that typical uses check.
Well, don't go up just now. So typical uses include single-family horizontally attached. So horizontally.
That's, that's the difference between. Yeah, that's the difference between Jim's legal condo language.
Which is the state one, which is the one I'm rolling out of my head.
So, and and how apparently city planners talk differently. So so tho- those are the use, then if you scroll down to the next high-density category.
That's good. We could pipe some confusion into our.
So now you have your typical uses of townhomes and condos. So that was the disconnect there. That use is listed under high density. The density of what they're trying to do and the scale of what they're trying to do matches with the medium density. It's just the unit type. Does not match with our high density, our low medium density and the, in the comprehensive point.
You're making a strict interpretation.
Yes. And as I noted, I have in the past, my own opinion has been that that line can be fuzzy. And you can reasonably look at a proposed product and say. It's similarly, similarly analogous to this because it's a lower density. I think that that's a fair interpretation, but we are taking the stricter approach from a staff perspective. I think as Jim mentioned, you know, it's maybe the more defensible approach as well. It's certainly more cut and dry. If you change it to that, you're being very.
Luke, who has the authority to make a decision? If somebody disagrees with your interpretation of the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance, who has the authority to overturn your decision?
That would be an appeal of us as a zoning administrator, which would go to our Board of Adjustment. And then the Board of Adjustment would become the de facto administrator at that point in time. I don't know if that would apply to an appeal of my interpretation of the comprehensive plan, though. I think that's probably limited to zoning.
I think the council makes that decision whether to be compliant with the comprehensive plan. We've gathered an information on that right now. And if the council as a legislative body interprets their legislation. Court is much less likely to challenge that because they've approached the legislative action, plus it's clearly erroneous.
That makes sense for the comp plan. Just know for zoning ordinance.
But now, right now, we're, this is. I'd be interested after we see the map to to hear from. The public that's here. And then maybe we discuss some more.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was getting there, but.
I know, I know you kept getting interrupted.
Luke, am I going in the right direction?
Yeah, you are. After all the definite, oh, I felt, yep, there you go. Yeah, and you're on the right side of it, so. So the wreck, the the area that's, that's labeled wreck, that's kind of the bright green, is the legacy golf course, or, okay, there you go, perfect.
So it's medium-density residential currently all the way out. So Lindsey. Have you received any oral or written comments on this?
I have, because I'm not sure if I've received it on the comp plan amendment or the Happy Hills P U D.
Oh.
So possibly.
Yes, I, from the Planning Commission side, we've considered those to be comments on both. Because they contain comments that are germane to this and then comments that are other, so it's, we've just kind of entered them. On the Planning Commission side as comments for both.
And yes, we have, all in opposition. They were all included in your packet, minus one that has been put in front of you tonight. Yes. Yes.
Ready? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Adam Grub, nine thirty-five, sixty-sixth street, West Moyn. Sorry to shift gears really quick. I do want to say thank you. Windsor Windows and Mark, you talk to any builder in the country, when you listen to supply chain, you hear supply chain. The number one concern is windows. There's no offense from Eugene, Oregon to Birmingham, Alabama. It's windows. And when you get a call at ten o'clock at night, the Windsor windows is down, and every single window you buy is for Windsor windows. It's a sick feeling. And for them to get back up as quick as they have, and for him to say that, that you guys have helped get that up, that's a huge impact, not on us, but our entire industry. So thank you for that. Uh, I am Adam Grub. I'm the owner and CEO of Jerry's Homes. My family's been building in central Iowa sixty-five years. We've been so that. Building in Norwalk for twelve years now. I guess my question, Mr. Mayor, would be, is it okay? I think it's relevant to give context to the P U D. As to why we're asking for the change in the comprehensive plan on parcel A. Just to kind of, I think, I think what I'd like to do, you know, when, when we've been building in Norwalk for a really long time, we've been building single-family homes. And in most of the communities, we have a diversification of product types. We had always just built single-family here in Norwalk. So when we looked for a piece. And we looked at that future land use map, and the wrong property came available, you know, this really made a lot of sense. For us and why we pursued it. I think, I think at a really high level. With medium density, it wasn't our goal to maximize that density. It was our goal really to have. Multiple product types that meets a broad range of homeowners within the community. Condos have gone away for a while, exactly for what Jim said, is there a horizontal property regime? Our row homes in two thousand eight were horizontal property, property regimes. And that just impacts the way in which you're able to get government financing, Freddie Fanny money, right? And that was really the huge impact as to why people started going away from the horizontal property regimes. It was difficult to be able to get financing for them, and that's why you saw everybody doing apartments. Because you couldn't get in on financing for a horizontal property regime or a condo unless the building was fifty percent sold out. And so usually you're having people that have to buy cash and they're trying to sell a hundred of them, fifty of them got to be sold, and it's just nearly impossible. So recently, they've changed that requirement, which has opened up the opportunity. And honestly, on on the parcel A and the condos, it is our sole intent to have these owner-occupied. We have private entrances. Every unit has an individual garage, and it's really to just offer some diversification within that. Medium density. So Luke, did you have, or did somebody have? If you want to click on link B or it'd be parcel B that link. Here's the easiest way, and we can forward you this email, so you're able to look at it on our website. That's going to be the best way to. That's going to be the best way to see it. So this, this is our row home. This is really your textbook medium density that we do throughout the community. This can really range anywhere from that nine to twelve units an acre. I think a key component to consider on this is this faces Beardsley, is the the front facade. Of the units would be facing Beardsley, and they would have no garages facing Beardsley. There's a lot of townhome or multifamily products that would have, you know, basically the garage. And the front door on the front and the back's just a patio. Certainly in this, this is not in compliance with Norwalk in terms of the diversification of architectural types and colors. Between units. This is just how we build these in different communities. I will just say, I came from, we had an event at our office earlier today with over a hundred agents. And overwhelmingly, the feedback that we got from agents was, we want more North Gate row homes, we want more Willow Creek. Willow, Willow Creek row homes and Windsor row homes. So almost everywhere that we build. The demand, just based on the price point, is is significant. Folks are getting priced out of that entry-level housing unit daily. The row homes really start anywhere from probably at this point, it'd be two thirty to two fifty. So it's a thirteen hundred square foot home. When my wife and I got married, this is where we lived for two years. We've made modifications to it since. But that, that ultimately is parcel B. I think that's your kind of textbook. Medium density use. If you click on parcel C, we also have. Our, what we would consider an empty nester product. What's interesting about the row homes is it's an extremely broad. Customer base, a way more broad customer base than you would, you would anticipate. The Crestmores, I mean, even if you want to click on, click, click right, you can kind of see on some of the interiors. I mean, everything we're doing is hardwood floors, granite countertops. In parcel C, this is four units an acre. These start again around two thirty, two forty. This just meets a different buyer. Typically an empty nester, but not always. A lot of folks do these. We build these throughout, throughout the metro. And then parcel D is a single family. Based on time, you can have that link. You're able to see really what our product type's going to be, two and three car garages, really similar to what we're building throughout Norwalk. Currently. So the big change really comes to parcel A. And then I send you the, I think you guys have that for previous, and we had it for P N Z.
I just have an image.
That's okay, that's okay. It, and again, I think at the core, as we started working with staff, we started having this conversation about how we can get. Some more diversification of the product types. In Norwalk, as we built those row homes, we were always in that one seventy-five, one eighty range at a two and a half, three percent rate. That has evolved to where now we're at five percent and we're two hundred and fifty thousand. So you can argue on what rates do, but the reality is those costs now are two thirty to two fifty, which was one eighty. Not but two or three years ago. So the condominium gives, an owner-occupied condo gives somebody that opportunity. To not have to go rent and not pay somebody else's mortgage. This again has a very broad customer base and appeal. One of the key things we do to differentiate from apartments is have the private entrances and then the individual garages for everybody. So that, this is a concept that we've built in the past. I mean, I think ultimately, I, we wanted to offer something to kind of give you a visual of the building that we're building. But I will say that I think the biggest component was really coming back to that diversification of product type within the medium density, which is in the comp plan. As I looked through that comprehensive plan, I mean, it was less than one percent of the existing land use was M D R. And of what is developed is two point two percent compared to fifty-eight percent for low-density residential. So in an eighty-acre parcel, we're able to span from two hundred thousand all the way up to six hundred thousand. And really offer five to six different product types. And that ultimately was, was the goal. So when we looked at the piece, that's kind of how we really, you know, and sorry for the confusion with it, but that's. That was ultimately how we came to this, is we want a more diversification of product types as we got into the, into this piece.
So can I ask you a question like that? So parcel A, each one of those squares, in theory, would be that. Row of building, row of.
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so I understand.
Yeah, and I certainly think too, we've tried to take some thoughtful approach to that buffering. I mean, all the water detention is along that line. There would be additional minimal buffering, not minimal buffering, but that would exceed the minimal buffering on top of the water detention. I believe we sent over kind of a diagram that shows, I think we're about a hundred and seventy. I think the typical, like on an industrial, you're about a seventy-five foot buffer. And I believe we're about a hundred and seventy feet to the center of the road. So our buffer is really extreme. Into the front of the residence across the street, we're over three hundred feet. And and that was intentional in the way that we wanted to add additional buffering with, you know, that stormwater detention up front there.
So how many acres is parcel A?
Ten. I think it's just a hair over ten.
And how many residences is in that? One building?
Sixteen. So it'd be eight two-bedrooms and eight three-bedrooms.
So when you talk about the buffer, help me out so I can understand.
Yeah.
Okay, you, the ponds there, right, or the water detention?
Yeah.
Okay, behind that, going south. What's immediately behind the pond or the?
Uh, between, between our homes and the pond or the pond and the road?
No, between the homes and the pond. Or the homes and.
We would not have anything between our homes and the pond, and I think there would be a minimum landscape buffer between the, you know. At least a minimum, right? I mean, there's, there would be a requirement of a buffer between Beardsley and the pond. Am I correct in that?
Okay, so there'd, there'd be landscaping in there. I guess, okay, I just had a hard time seeing it from the, from the diagram.
Yeah.
But you would, you would buffer that from the street and from the other side.
Yes, yeah. And I mean, I certainly think that's something that we would be, you know, part of that P U D, we understand it's a dialogue. And I think that would be a piece that, you know, we're open to that dialogue of what that would look like.
I just, and just to let everybody know, the numbers you gave, so for each one of those squares. You said eighteen units?
Sixteen.
Sixteen units.
Sorry. Does it not, does the math not?
No, I, so I count seven. Seven box here, so seven times sixteen.
Uh, the one, I think the upper one is detention. I do not think, I think that's stormwater detention. Is that correct?
So B times six.
So.
And then that times three for average household size would give total number of people.
Oh, I I think in the, actually in the land, in your, I think it's like two point four is what's in the comp plan.
Ninety-six units. I just wanted to make sure that math made sense. Other public comments.
Jennifer Ellison, thirty-nine hundred West Town Parkway, West Moyn. I am Director of Land Development for Jerry's Homes. I just started there this year, but I do have experience in planning. I've been in the public sector for about fourteen years at the city, county, and state level. So very familiar with rezoning and what we're doing here and trying to develop. Mr. Mayor and council members, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to bring this request forward this evening. Jerry's Homes does own that eighty-acre parcel that we're referring to. We are looking to, to develop it in accordance with the policies of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. As well as meeting the city ordinance requirements. We are in agreement with the staff recommendation, believe the staff report did a great job summarizing questions. And answers regarding this request. The entire development area, as mentioned, on that future land use map is medium-density residential, and it has been since. And it has been since twenty thirteen based on city plans. Our request is just for that small northeast portion of the property that's ten acres in size, as mentioned. We're looking at nine point five eight units with the condos versus the maximum of twelve units that would be allowed for that medium density. Again, going back to the discussion about the buildings, the reason for the high density residential is basically for that structure. It's not the density, our density is actually meeting what was expected for this property and the growth that had been proposed. We do feel that the two-story units match the height requirements of thirty-five feet and would transition well with the single family and townhomes in that area. As that is the height restriction for those structures as well. As far as the condo units themselves, they are stretched only along that northeastern portion of the property. So, it's about a third of the front edge along Beardsley, about four hundred and thirty feet total. We did have an exhibit that kind of shows that separation that Adam was referencing. I don't know if there's a link from today, Luke.
I have, you had sent me, there are seven slides from Google Earth.
There would be a separate exhibit PDF. And as part of that, Adam had mentioned that we are providing a significant buffer. So, just from the edge of the condo to about the center line of the street is about a hundred and forty feet to the closest residence. That's about hundred, or three hundred and sixty feet total. So, there's quite a bit of buffer already built in there along Beardsley. We'll also be meeting the requirements for the landscaping in addition to that setback off of Beardsley. As, as part of the comprehensive plan, we know it's a policy guide for the growth of Norwalk. This is something that we've relied on to make informed decisions about the future development of this property. We've worked closely with the city staff to ensure the proposal meets the development requirements, is in line with the future land use map and the growth in Norwalk. And we recognize that this is an opportunity where we can provide a diversity of housing options that vary in size, density and location that are close to transportation routes, having utilities available, as well as the ability to economically and efficiently expand the public utilities. We know that the city has also completed a transportation study and taken a look at that Beardsley corridor. And there is expected growth in this area, transforming Beardsley to a three-lane road, going from a collector to a minor arterial street. We feel that this growth is going to happen. The city's already planning for it. It sounds like it's already part of the CIP program as well. We did strategically designate, I'm sorry, this property was strategically designated as medium density for the future development of this property since twenty thirteen, as mentioned. And we feel that we're in line with what we're proposing. I did want to note that on your future land use map, there are other areas throughout the community that have the high density residential, future land use adjacent to low density residential. One of them would be east on Beardsley, where you have the retirement community of Eden Crest. So, that is just one example in this general area. There's a few others in the community as well, where the future land use map does show that high density residential with the low density residential to the north. So, I just wanted to mention that, bring it to your attention. We appreciate your time and your thoughtful consideration of our request.
Is this the map that?
Yes, this is the map. So, there are some separation distances, I think, that are noted up there. Again, that closest house to the edge of the condo building on that north side of the property is about three hundred and sixty feet. Just to kind of give you an idea of how much buffer is realistically there. And again, we'll be providing landscaping buffer along the boundary of that property as well, in addition to the detention area.
Good evening. Les Bruner, five fifty-nine Beardsley. Want to thank the mayor and the council members for taking the opportunity to listen to my comments on behalf of myself, my family and the residents of the community along the north side of Beardsley. I've been making a few notes since we started this conversation and so I'm kind of got a few sporadic thoughts in here. I'll try and, try and stay focused here. But the main thing I, I got right away was, seemed like questions and concerns from the committee members or the council members in regards to the project and, and how things are going to go. Things, comments made like typical and expected. And that's a big concern of mine and I know the other residents in the area is, if this is approved, are we going to see what we expect to see or is this going to change somewhere down the road and end up being nothing that looks like what the plan is at this time? So, big, that, that would be a big concern of mine. It sometimes seems like the, and, and this comment was, was kind of touched on a little bit, that there can be some fuzzy lines in regards to what can be considered, I guess, the rule and what can be kind of fudged a little bit. And I guess what I'm asking is that you take into consideration the the residents of the area who have been in, in the community for a number of years and not necessarily favor the developer because they're bringing in commerce and, and more residents and tax base to the community. So, it was mentioned also, a dialogue that, you know, maybe, I, I don't know if we're already past that point or not, but could there be a possibility if this decision doesn't get made this evening? And it's maybe tabled to another meeting, is it possible that maybe the council, some council members, the residents and the developer can get together to plan something that might be more considerate of the existing residents in the, in the community? So, some of my other concerns, and you've got a letter in front of you, hopefully you've had an opportunity to see that. I assume that's considered to be in the record. I've talked about those things that the planning and zoning, some of it have been kind of, I guess, they're going to be solved somewhere down the road. That would be like the traffic along Beardsley. The potential for over-usage on the sewer line that's gone through the property owners on the north side of Beardsley. That doesn't seem to be an issue, but I still think it's something that needs to be considered as to what, how, how are those, how those changes may impact the city and the growth in the future. So, and one of the things, and, and I mentioned this to a couple of the council members that I talked to previously, it, it's a little bit, I guess, something that we all think about is our own property values. And we have kind of a unique setting out there in, in that part of the city. We've got acreages that have lake access, kind of a one of a kind or a very unique setting. And I just feel like that I understood that development would come to our area at some point, but I really felt like it was going to be nice, single-family homes like you see in the legacy or other parts of these new developments out along G fourteen, fiftieth. That was my expectation. Now, I understand that this, if it fits into the city plan, there may be no way to combat that, but I guess I would just like the council members to take into consideration if you had lived in one of our properties for twenty-five plus years, knowing well that that development would come, what you would like to see come to that area rather than just make a rash decision because of what might be thought as commerce to the city and, and additional tax base. Thank you for the opportunity. We would stop by, by, by Beardsley. And like Les, thank you folks for being able to listen to us tonight. You're our concerns. To start off with, I've had experience with Jerry's Homes over the years and I gotta, I gotta be truthful with you in that we've had good experiences with them. They've done good work in the past. And anything I'm going to say here is nothing against the developer themselves, but more so about the plan that we're seeing. To start out with, I'm presuming that you've seen all the documents we provided to P and Z and to the council and you've reviewed those. And, and hopefully we'll consider all those concerns that we've expressed. To start out with, I'm going to go through a little bit of history. And this history's going to, starts with the trunk sewer that services this area that developers doing. We as residents up there were lobbied fairly heavily by the city to facilitate the construction of this trunk sewer. And without that trunk sewer construction that runs across our properties on the south side of the lake, nothing on the south side would be built now or be built into the future. And, and I hope you guys understand that we as residents didn't need the headaches of the construction going through our yards and tearing up the yards with trenches that were plus twenty-foot deep and white excavations and damages that we incurred. And for the most part, all we were looking for is to be left alone, but we also know that development needs to occur. So, what the residents all agreed to help the city and proceed with the construction on this. And we're still in that process of doing that. But through the process, we were all told we would be made whole and we'd be left in a better situation than we were pre-sure. The properties out there are still torn up and we're receiving very little attention on getting these issues resolved. So, consider my comments, how they involve the sewer issue. We've been over backwards and then we're, we're not sure we're getting a fair shake on the, on the land uses across the way. Through the process also, it almost, from my perspective, it seems like there's a bit of insensitivity to the concerns of the residents. They don't seem to be articulated very well to the commission and maybe to the council.
Which process? Sorry, I'm just clarifying.
Planning and zoning here, it just-
This process?
Yes.
Not this trunk.
Yeah, we're, yeah, this process. Yeah, I'm moving on to that. I'm moving into development. Sorry.
I was just clarifying. Thank you.
Sorry. But we want to, I want to make sure that everybody understands what our real concerns are here. There's been, there's been no counter proposals proposed. The, the staff reports the P and Z were not available to us before the meeting, or at least we couldn't find them, but they were. And during the P and Z hearing process, we were limited to three minutes, which is incredibly short on something as significant as this. So, I think there's some process tweaks that the city could do that would help some of this go forward. And since you guys are in development mode, you're going to see a lot of this as it goes forward. Some of the alternatives, yes, I, I think I'm speaking for the residents. We, we do believe the density is a bad fit for our neighborhood and should never happen. But we also understand that its comp plan is, is, is the R three right now and it is what it is. But we're concerned that the, what's proposed to be built right across from us is not appropriate. We don't understand why essentially there, there's a proposal to build ten acres of apartments right there. And while they're not being referred to as apartments, the lots that are built on the outlots easily can be sold off and converted apartments. And there's frankly, nothing the city can do about. It is what it is. So, we're hopeful you're listening to us and, and concerned about those buildings. We'd all prefer to see single family across it. We know that's not going to happen. But when the city has to resort to a PUD and contract zoning to make these apartments fit on the comp plan, something's wrong with the process. And I, we've heard the council iterate that a little bit tonight. So, it's not fitting very well with what's going on here. If the, if the council thinks that it's important to have these buildings that are proposed on lot A constructed, put them somewhere else in the development. If you can pull a map up to show that, put them on the south end. We don't have to look at them. It's over the hill. We just don't want to look uphill at apartments every day. It doesn't make sense to do it. There's, it's a bad land use transition. And if you need the density and the developer needs it to make a cash flow, flip the site. It's a simple solution. But what we heard at, at P and Z was the developer indicated he didn't want those buildings down amongst his single family because it would devalue them. We find that incredible. I guess in, in closing, I know I personally feel that we went out of the way to facilitate the city by accommodating that sewer. And I'm really disappointed that this is how we're going to get rewarded by having those apartments go across from us. If this, though, gets approved as proposed, I really feel that the trust has been breached between the residents and the council. And I, I hate saying that. I really don't want to be in front of you folks. I just need to be home watching television. But that's how I feel on this. There's a better way to do this and there are multiple opportunities to have a discussion outside of the council chambers or even P and Z to resolve these issues and that's not taking place. And you're going to see hundreds of these going forward if you don't develop a system that you can resolve these somewhere other than at the DAS. So, with that, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. I think you guys understand the situation really is, real clearly. I guess that we don't, I don't believe that the apartment-type buildings are the appropriate use for this area. With that, thank you.
I want to kind of clarify something before you brought up, your talking process. And one of the things that kind of complicates it a little bit is when we're talking, the only we set. In consideration of that, I know the legal expert here, he advised me that he should have, like judges, like a court. And so, discussions offline can't really be had, they have to be had in a public meeting. So, that both sides are fairly given an opportunity, you know, to address issues. So, I, I know that doesn't probably satisfy you, but we have a legal requirement or a legal procedure that we have to follow in the middle of all this stuff. And it complicates our lives too.
Well, to clarify that a little bit, as you know, I worked for municipal government for over thirty years also. And the same exact legal discussion took place with those folks. But, but they're, the way they chose to deal with it is that they, they chose to allow the residents and citizens of the community to be able to speak to their elected officials and didn't worry so much about the outcome of the hearing and to be secluded. So, that's something you might want to consider. I know that'd be contrary to what Mr. Dougherty may be advising you of. But it sure leaves us abandoned and we can't talk to our elected officials.
Well, I appreciate your comments.
And it, that's how at least it was handled in West Moyn.
So, so just before, when have you reached out to any of the elected officials?
On this one, I haven't. I did it on the commission.
So, so why is it an issue that we didn't respond to something that didn't get asked of us?
I know, I know others have in our, our neighborhood. I just did not.
Okay. I just question, because you're bringing it up that we're not reachable, but yet.
The point was, I, I had a conversation with Ed a little bit. He indicated that he's been given legal advice not to have extra partake communications on a public hearing process. Which, which from a legal perspective is probably fine. Perspective, it doesn't work very well.
Makes it challenging, that's true.
Yes, it is.
But that's one of the things that, that's legal advice I've been given. And so, I want to obviously try to follow that.
Well, the other thing to consider and nothing against Mr. Dougherty, but the, the legal advice is opinions, just like anybody else's mind is and whatever. Sometimes you're right, sometimes you're wrong.
Yeah, that's, that's a fact.
So.
All right, well, thank you.
Is there anything else? Thank you very much.
Jeff Helverson, five seventy-one Beardsley. Directly across from the future apartments. I sent each council member some notes. I hope everybody received it. Am I correct?
Yes, they're in the packet.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. According to the comprehensive plan, page five dash thirty-four, develop zoning and subdivision regulations that promote efficient land usage and long-term adequacy while avoiding land use conflicts and inefficient provision of the public infrastructure. The land use that the PUD and so on does not meet the proposed plan as I see it. Page five dash thirty-seven, PUDs need to be a win-win scenario for the community and the developer while providing a means to encourage creative yet responsible systems developments. The proposed plan is not a win-win for us. I live right across the street. It's gonna have a negative impact on my property values for sure. Not to mention the aesthetics of it, which just didn't match the area at all. Other than that, please read my notes if you would that I did send out. My wife and I are extremely upset about this. It does not fit the harmony of the community at all. There's no reason for it. As Dwayne mentioned, move it, put it somewhere else. But we're, we don't have to look at it driving out of our driveway, which is exactly what I'm gonna be doing. Thank you for your time.
Cheechy, sorry. Memory, wait, what it used to be. I'll tell you that. All right. Greg Tice, five six seven, five six three Beardsley. Going on seventeen years as a taxpaying resident at the city of Norwalk. Seventeen years ago, when we moved in, I recall specific conversations with my neighbors about where we lived and what was gonna be happening in our neighborhood. We knew, no one was naive about what was gonna happen in our neighborhood. We went into this thing for eyes wide open. Honestly, I'm surprised it's taken as long as it did. I thought this would happen sooner. I am opposed to the P U D and the change in designation for parcel A. Even now, I mean, just, just think about, you were doing the math and number of headcount and buildings and stuff like that. In the mornings on Beardsley, I mean, at the school right now, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. And that's before a single house has been sold on the signature progress. That's just with like Blooming Heights and Timber Ridge or View, whatever it is out there to the west. I mean, we're dealing with traffic issues right now. Also, it's been stated by Mr. Whitstock. It seems like a simple solution is just to literally flip the P U D. They obviously want to protect their high value properties. Why not protect ours? And flip the P U D. Now, I've heard in the P and Z meeting that parcel A has to be high density because it's close to the corridor. Well, if you flip the P U, flip the P U D, you've got two roads going in there. And there's gonna be further development to the south of this. We'll make one of those a corridor. Again, flip it, put the high density to the back, the bigger lots at the front adjacent to our lots. Again, when I look at what's going on across from Echo Valley, single family homes, setback, nice big berms, landscape, to me, that would be acceptable. And one of the points about the, the setback between the proposed buildings and the existing residences that's not being taken into consideration is a change in elevation. That's up as you go north to south, from the lake, if you will, to this property, it's a elevation. So now you're putting a two-story building on top of a hill, which is gonna stand out even further. Is it safe to assume that this has tax abatement? This development will have tax abatement?
The city offers tax abatement for single family and townhome projects.
Right. So this will get tax paid?
The, the, the parcel A that's currently being discussed will not.
Will not, but the rest will.
Correct.
Okay. As also stated earlier by Mr. Whitstock, I firmly feel that the residents on the north side of Beardsley negotiated in good faith with the city when that sewer line went in. And all we're asking for is some consideration as this starts to develop. Just want some consideration here. Think about us a little bit, not just what's coming, what the impact is gonna have on our, our, our neighborhood. And this may be a little harsh and I apologize. It just seems like with this proposal, it's like, well, the city got their sewer line in. They're getting our tax revenue. Screw them. We don't, it fits the plan or whatever. Hell, we don't screw them. If, in my opinion, if this P U D amendment is passed, to me, the tax abatement voice will be more important than the taxpayers' voice. The only people that spoke in favor of this tonight and in P and Z was the developer. Everyone else who spoke against it was a taxpayer. I beg of you, please do not pass this P U D in its current form. Thank you for your time.
I, I have a question for you before you sit down because I'm trying to understand you and I apologize now. I can't remember which of the gentleman before you made reference to negotiating with the city in good faith on the the sewer line. And my understanding is that the city wasn't, the, the city helped facilitate the discussions, but the city didn't have anything to do with the, the agreement and the sale and the easements.
Absolutely. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, so I don't understand how you, let me finish please. I don't understand how two of you have now stood up and say you feel like we're treating you unfairly and that this would be a slap in your face and break the trust when you negotiated with us to make that happen and now we're not giving you what you want in this instance, if that's how it turns out.
When you look at like other development, like, like if you notice the development going on just south of Echo Valley, why can't we get something like that? Single family homes?
But that's not my question. My question is trying to understand why you are equating or, or bringing the, the prior project on Beardsley, which was a commercial or I mean, a development issue. It was not a city project.
Understand, understand that. The feeling, the feeling, okay, it's a feeling. That we went through that process. We know this development was gonna happen. We just thought our concerns would be more heartfelt and listened to.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you understand the tax abatement?
I understand tax.
No, do you understand that it's partial?
Yes, it's graduate. Yeah.
Can I finish?
Absolutely.
Please. Our tax abatement is not full tax abatement and it's not graduated. It's, how does it work again?
First seventy-five thousand.
The first seventy-five thousand dollars of the first three hundred thousand dollars of a house.
Yep.
So if the house isn't valued at three hundred thousand dollars, you're not getting the full seventy-five thousand dollars. So they're still paying taxes.
Yes.
So they're not getting full tax. Do you understand that part?
Yes, I do.
Because, because you implied that they were not gonna be paying taxes and I just wanna make sure you understand that.
Rephrase that then. They won't be paying as much taxes.
Depends on value of that.
Right. I don't, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure you understood how our tax abatement works because it's, it's.
It's not.
I don't understand how that affects the discussion we're having about parcel A. That doesn't have tax.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to the P U D, not to the parcel A.
Okay. And we're still on parcel A.
Oh, I misunderstood. Then I, I apologize. My mistake. My mistake. This one.
Thank you. I'm just trying to clarify.
One, then one last comment, tax abatement. I don't understand. I've heard reports that the, you know, the metro short fifty thousand residential homes or some crazy number. There's always need for housing. I don't know. Why are we even doing tax paper? Personal comment. Thank you.
Before you get away. Just really quick. So the, the focus of your problem with, right, this P U D, it's what's gonna happen in parcel A.
There again, I was missed, I was based on previous conversations, people talking. I thought we were talking about the P U D and the both items together. I guess we're not.
No, I, I wanna understand what your objection is.
My objection is the P U D one.
Okay.
And if, if, if it's gonna, these density changes are gonna happen, flip it to the backside of the property. Flip the P U D.
Okay.
And put parcel A in the southwest corner, the southeast corner of the eighty acres. Every day flip it.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sorry. Again. Just as a point of clarification, this is for council, probably everybody here. The abatement, seventy-five thousand, we pay about fifty percent on the dollar for residential property tax. So you have to take seventy-five thousand, divide that in half. By that, by a thousand, you come up with a number that you multiply by the levy. City's levy is about fifteen dollars. That means per year for each new residential home that's built, the city receives five hundred and sixty-two dollars less for five years. The school receives less, about six hundred dollars a year.
I, I did also wanna clarify. I had mentioned that the multifamily was not eligible for abatement, which is correct. We don't give multifamily abatement. If they are converted to a condo, the county considers that a single family unit, which would be eligible for abatement. So.
However, all those applications have to come to council for approval.
Correct. So.
Nick Fouts, five seven, five Beardsley Street. Appreciate the time. It's getting along, so I try to be quick here. Appreciate the opportunity for more than three minutes that we had the P and Z. Is this a public building?
Yes.
Owned by the taxpayers?
Yes.
Is, is Luke a city official? That you guys converse with on a regular basis on projects or developments? At a fair statement, is, is your engineering team that you use as an outsourcer? Some of you guys converse with on a regular basis about projects or developments, opportunities? And so that's a fair statement. You know, Jackie had mentioned earlier with regards to the sewer line, every meeting we had was in this building. Who goes there? Oprah was there. You folks might not have been there, but I'm assuming you've heard about it. I'm assuming you knew about it. And we were led as far, you know, I was one of, one of the last holdups myself and the neighbor to the east of me, which we can notice the situation there because we're having some current issues with, with the developer on the project and the water retention. So I find it interesting. You guys were talking about water earlier. I'm sure Chuck was able to be here. He'd be here, but he's in bad health, but none of us wanted that sewer. We didn't want the disruption in our backyards. We didn't want anything to do about. I mean, I've got almost five acres, one point six of my acres were affected by the sewer line. I still got multiple issues with my backyard, just like everybody else does. So we did in good faith, my septic tank worked. I didn't have any issues with my septic tank. I just had it cleaned. Everything was working properly. In good faith, we went forward to basically help the, help the community. And as I found out last week from, from Luke Paris over here, not only did it help fuel the development for, for the south side of Beardsley, it helped alleviate other problems and issues in the city. I wasn't even aware of that. Oh, Luke's not even said over there. So keep in mind and bear in mind what we did to help the city. I understand there's not much we can do about the medium residential, what it's owned to now. I would encourage the city, because this is something new I found out too, that was brought up by one of the P and Z people in a, in a conversation. And we've been there for almost twenty years. I knew nothing of, of the meetings or opportunities to voice concern about the land across from my residents. And if you back up Luke a little bit, go east on, on Beardsley, you'll see my property. It's right there. That's Jeff's driveway, Elvis's driveway. You'll see my property. My, my property actually is split between where Jerry's homes wants to, would be parcel A and the current Shadow Creek.
Because it's yours.
That's mine. If if we would have known six years ago, ten years ago, and then plans changed, if the residents would have known what was going to be constructed or potentially constructed across the street, I guarantee I would have been there. I probably have been some kids event, but I would have made sure to go ahead and be there. I, I heard, I heard, overheard, you know, last week, I think it was, where those types of discussions take places at the July fourth event. It's not a very good place to have those types of discussions. Why not get ahold of the residents that live straight across from there? If you're looking at development, that'd be straight across from, from their houses. That's just a suggestion. When you look at future planning, I understand there's probably not much we can do about it now. I'll echo a lot of the comments that, that other residents made along there. My concern with parcel A, I guess, is, you know, what makes it different than apartments? You've got, you know, vertically integrated. What stops them from renting them? And when we have renters over there, which is gonna drive down, you know, our values. We saw last week, I think it was, maybe been two weeks ago, we saw an idea. I saw that they changed it of what they were gonna look like, who's proposed. And when you looked at it, it looked like apartments. I mean, my home right there is, you know, high six figures, low seven figure. I don't wanna look across the street and see apartment style buildings that are a hundred to two thousand dollars. I mean, what do you think that'll do for my property value? Would any of you like to look at that across from your places? I would assume not. I don't wanna look at that. It was, the comments were made earlier about why not flip it? Well, they don't wanna flip it because they wanna protect their single family homes. We'd like it flipped or at least, you know, some single families up front to create that buffer, that transition more in harmony with our properties. Then, then transition it. Why not take the high, the higher, high density, some of the medium density, put it back by that park? Those people don't have yards. Oh, they'd have a yard. Those are types of things that, that I question, and I think you guys should look into and question as, as well. With regards to, you know, to the sewer is, as I'd mentioned, we feel as though we've bent over backwards to help the city with the developing. It's been a headache. As Luke knows, for all of us out there, we're still dealing with a lot of stuff with that, with that sewer. And I thank, thank Luke for, for stepping in and trying to help out there. I don't wanna have the, the same type of issues that we're also seeing across the street with the Shadow Creek development. There's multiple issues with that, the retention pond, the breach and the retention prawn is causing issues with my neighbor and on, on my yard. You know, recently I found out, you know, the buffer isn't gonna be done. The berm won't be done or completed until after construction. I mean, it, it's just an ice war for us. It's constant noise for us. And then lucky me, if this goes through, I'll have another one right, right beside it, just to the west. And that's what I'll be seeing out the south side of my house is lovely two-story complexes, one slightly up on a hill. And then, you know, three of them that are in the Shadow Creek Estates. And, and when we're on that topic, I do want to say something here on the record. You know, that was during COVID. And I was home. I was home. I'm fortunate. I own my business. I work from home quite often. I happened to be home. If you guys remember, it was really nice weather in March. We just got back from a senior trip from one of my children and I was home for three weeks and it was super nice weather. And that's when all the discussions were coming out about the Shadow Creek Estates. There was never any sign put up there. At least I'll give it to Jerry's homes. At least put a sign up and somebody let us know there was gonna be, you know, a change in the, in the zoning. I never got a letter. We got a letter this time from the city. I asked all the other residents. I asked all the other residents out there, matter of fact, I was just talking to Jeff about this the other day. He never got a letter, none of us got letters, we had no idea what was going on there. I don't know, some fell through the cracks, but there was no sign, and none of us got letters out there. If if we would have seen a sign, and if we would have got letters, I guarantee you, all of us would have been here. Just like we heard today, and talking about the Jerry's Homes development. We would have been here talking about the signature development, and would have been asking the same things about, hey, let's look at this differently. Let's flip this development, why are you having these two-story townhouses right across from us? In not single family homes, because it just, it isn't in harmony, it doesn't transition. It is gonna affect, you know, my my property values, and my wife's not here, we love our home, we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears in it. And she's already told me, she said, hey, if something like this goes forward, you know, she doesn't want to live there anymore. I mean, which is heartening to hear, since we've been here for such a long period of time. And I pay a fair amount of tax on my place, you know, go and look and see what I pay for my taxes. And you'll you'll see, it it's quite a large number. So I just want you to take into consideration what what all the residents have said, my neighbors, friends and myself. Appreciate it.
Hey Mick, I would like to clarify something, I'm sure that Jackie would like to hear me say this. When we started the Beardsley discussion about that sewer back there, and the developer proposed the idea. These elected officials told me very clearly, Luke, this is not something that you should be involved in, let the developers handle it. I came back to elected officials, and I've said, I've had several property owners contact me, they're asking me to attend these meetings. It was kind of okay, but that's why I joined in those meetings, because I was asked by the residents to be there.
Yeah. And I'm I'm not. Once again, that that's, that's like a fine line in a in a gray area, I'm I'm sure that the city, in hindsight, wished that the city would have ran that project, I've heard that many times.
No, this city official does not.
Well, I I've heard for, you know, I I've heard from different sources that you know, the the city may have want to have been more involved in that, in that, in that project, but from my seat. You know, I I did it in good faith, I I didn't need it, I didn't need the headache in my backyard. Had I would have known that this was going to to spur what was going on across the street. As Les mentioned, we, you know, we were assuming, hey, it's gonna be, you know, nice, single family homes. Or some type of transition, and that's why I mentioned the Shadow Creek. I would have been here, just like I'm here today, if I would have known about those meetings, I was home. I know during COVID, they, you know, probably would have been online, but I can guarantee you, there was no sign, and I never got a letter. You can ask any of the, any of the residents out there within the two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet, or whatever it is. If they got letters, they're all gonna tell you absolutely not. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Wayne Woodstock, five 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 Beardsley. To clarify a question you had, Miss Levinson, about the city's involvement in this. Up until the easements were signed, I never went to a single meeting that Luke and the city's agent through Beanstruck Kim was not in attendance, most of them occurred here. And while you may be led to believe the city wasn't involved in this, they were neck deep in this whole discussion, I'm I'm sorry if that's what you believe. I understand the unique financing that took place here, and how it accommodated the project, but the city was involved. And this, it it just is what it is. And just to point to clarify that, that's that's where I'm at on it.
Thank you for clarifying your perspective.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Hearing nobody, we will go ahead and close public hearing at eight fourteen P M. Item seven D is resolution improvement comprehensive plan amendment to change ten acres south of Beardsley Street and west of Shadow Creek Estates, planning their development from future medium density residential to high density residential. So we just had the public hearing on site. And this resolution is to approve moving ten acres from medium density to high density in the cop. So after hearing everything that you've heard. Regarding the cop plan amendment. Do you want to do the cop plan amendment, or do you want to just move on to the P U D? And amend the P U D some way to facilitate these particular, this particular development in parcel A?
And so how, so just so I'm clear, procedure we could move to table. The resolution, we could, it could fail for lack of motion. Or it could be moved approved or moved and denied.
Yes.
Those are the four options, right, am I?
Yes. Or you can modify.
Well, I would, I would not make a motion.
If it doesn't pass, the council could still have a finding, if they want to change, if their final will change the P U D, a zoning change. I would specifically have the council have a finding in that, that that changes compliance with the conference of plan.
But that's the direction we choose to go.
That's right.
Yes, I understand, thank you for explaining that.
So if we did do that. What's the downside?
Well, the only downside to it is that it's not as crystal clear, that's in compliance with the plan.
You want to make, you want us to make? If we choose not to make any changes to the comprehensive plan, and we want to approve the B U D, he wants us to add a line in.
Finding that it's in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so, so I would tell you, I don't want to have a change to the P, to the comprehensive plan. From, you pointed out the fact that if you change it from medium to high. They can change, and I think if they're maintaining the medium density key, so that I think we're still I don't see a need to change. So I don't have.
So then. So then, I would ask the mayor to call for a motion. On D.
So can I get a motion for? Pass this resolution?
Resolution to change the comprehensive.
Yes, yes. And hearing none.
We take, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, you want a break?
Yes, could we take a break before the next topic?
Yes, you can. Alright, so we're gonna take five ten.
Five is five.
All right. Y'all ready to go again? Great, Lindsay?
Ready.
All right, here we go. We are back in order at 8:29 PM. So next to item is item seven E, which is public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to change land west of Shadow Creek State, south of Beardsley from agricultural reserve to the Hackney Hills plan unit development. So we'll open up public hearing at 8:29 PM. I would like to ask that all of the, to incorporate all of the written statements and all of the, everything that was presented from the last public hearing into the record for this public hearing. Okay. Well, this is the same area that we just talked about where the comprehensive plan amendment failed.
Including the additional 70 acres.
And, okay, yes. You have any more if you'd like to present?
Um, just based on some of the discussions there, I know one of the things that talked about was buffering and, you know, some willingness to, to do above and beyond minimum requirements. I did want to call attention to the buffering section in here. It does state right now that we'll just follow the standard buffering requirements. So I believe the developer mentioned in their presentation, they'd be willing to do more if the city asks us to. So that would be something to, if you wanted to look at that, just wanted to call out that right now, it's just calling our, out for our standard buffer. So that would be a discussion to have if you desired. Other than that, the other areas of the PUD are two parcels for different townhomes. One parcel B and one parcel C. They have the same R three requirements set on both parcels. And then parcels D, E, F, G, and H are single family parcels with varying lot widths from 50 foot up to 65 foot.
Sorry, I was reading, would you repeat parcel B and C? Those are townhomes?
Correct. Yes. And one other, sorry, one other important point. The parkland identified in the master plan is, let me get back up to my staff report here. And I want to quote you correctly, acreages. It is 6.4 acres and a trail that the developer would construct that runs north, south through the park. The unit count on the PUD would say that during the prelim plat, we would require them to give us 7.8 acres. Our subdivision process says that when a developer requests to give us less than the acreage that we, our code would require, that they should go and discuss that with our parks commission, get a parks commission recommendation on what they kind of like or don't like. And then that moves forward to P and Z and then on to you all. They have done that. The park commission met on April 6th and recommended to our planning commission to, they recommend a couple of changes to where the trail should go and its width. They ended up with a 10 foot wide trail. And the, so then they recommended that to planning and zoning commission, who then recommended it to you as part of their recommendation for the planned unit development.
And the trail looks like it continues through the south end, I think it's the south end of parcel F and the middle of parcel D. Is that true?
Can you back out so I can see, I can't see the parcels on Luke Nelson's screen. It does, it is, yes, okay, yes, it is, the intent of the plan is that that trail, it would be a trail in the front of those homes that would extend up to our trail on 50, our Beardsley.
Thank you.
Correct.
And then on the other end of it, it was also hooked up with the trail that's in development that would be further.
Yep. So there'd be an opportunity there. And then there'd be also on this Appaloosa Avenue trail that would go back and run east, west to connect over to the Shadow Creek Trail that is on street in their development as well, which would also provides a connection south into the southern development in that area as well.
Okay, when I look at parcel B, what type of a structure am I seeing there?
Parcel B.
Which is the one in the middle toward Beardsley.
Yep. So all those small lot lines are just delineating the individual lots for each townhome unit. So there'd likely be like one building and the developer can comment to exactly how many per building there, but likely five, six units in a row, four units in a row. So that's what those lot.
This would be similar then to what I see up there in the brownstone.
Correct.
When I look at parcel D and those lots on both sides of that street, what do I see there? What kind of structure?
Single family home.
Okay, so those would be single family homes.
Correct.
And parcel C, that would be again like the brownstones.
Correct. Probably a different form, just so you can tell by the lot sizes, they're probably a little bit wider of a unit. So.
So, so F then would be single family homes up in parcel left.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then, yeah, that basically the whole right side of the screen then ends up being single family homes with the park on the kind of west side.
Sure. So these are all single family homes. Once you get past Plains Avenue, basically that's the traditional kind of a development.
Correct.
Thank you.
Did you mention in there that commission asked for that trail to be along the west end of that?
Oh, correct.
That works depicted?
Yeah, I think it's backwards. I think it's supposed to, we need to have it flipped to the other.
Yeah, bend out a little bit, I think.
Yes.
If I remember the description.
I wanted it to bend to the west.
Further on the west end of the park instead of going through the center of the park.
Thank you. And so what in this plan or in this PUD, what are private roads?
Uh, if you could jump back to it. Okay, so the, where you see labels internal to parcel B of Arabian, Pasolfinna, Shire, and I, sorry, I can't read the one, Pershawn. And then Arabian to, on parcel C in Shire as well. So essentially what you'd have would be two roads that came north of Plainside and intersected with the Pershawn Lane on the north. And then the Pershawn and Pasolfinna Lane would connect out to Welsh Avenue.
Okay.
Sammy, can you draw that in there, Luke?
Okay, making sure. So though that area only is private?
Yes.
And so the connection between Shire, so the connection at
Right here.
Well, this road, whatever. Okay, wherever the road is. So that is public?
No, that's private.
Okay, so, so inside parcel B, all of those roads, once you come off of Welsh and off of Hackney, I don't even know if it's off of Hackney and off of Beardsley, everything in there is private.
Correct. Yeah, you can, you can only come off of Welsh and Plainside. Parcel B is only accessed by Welsh, parcel C is only accessed, accessed by Plainside.
Okay, thank you. Everything else is public.
Correct.
Okay, and where is, where is the, is there like a clubhouse or something for, for those in parcels B and C?
I do not believe so.
Are there basements for parcels A, B, or C?
We've not discussed that as part of the PUD.
Storm shelter for any of those places?
I would say no, since we've not discussed any of that.
That's what I assumed, but.
Yep.
Parcel A. If the proposed condominiums are public streets?
Um, parcel A, whatever internal network there would be private as well. I don't believe that they've labeled, I think the addressing to that would probably be all off of Welsh Avenue. And it wouldn't be considered each unit on its own public street. It'd be more like a complex parking lot drive.
Question. Yes, what was contemplated with Lanny's parcel A, better see the additional requirements? There shall be, there shall be minimum one garage parking space available for every two or three units instead of what's in zoning for?
Let me find that.
Which is one per unit.
I believe it had to do with the, that was additional requirements, all of the requirements.
Actually, five.
One.
It is.
I think it's supposed to be two or three units. Apologize for that. I gotta get back and look at what mine, what we changed from the zoning for that. I believe as I pull this up, that it is related to the two bedroom units that they were wanting to propose and what our code required for number of garages. Let me confirm that.
You know what it is?
Say.
We provide a lot garage treatment. Actually, I think it was just a code requirement. So that was the standard that you want.
It, I, I believe our code requires a 70% of the garage, like, so basically you don't have to have one garage for every unit. It's 70% of your spaces are your, your units need a garage. So it's requiring every unit to have a garage. Believe is the intent. Perhaps it can be reworded to be more clear.
Yeah, that's not what that says.
That's not what that says.
That, that reads like 70% or less.
I think that's what the prime written is, may show the one per unit.
You're showing.
So we can, we can reword that to one per unit.
That'd be awesome. That'd be good.
So assuming generally that parcels F, G, and H are the same general lot size? What is the lot size?
I'm sorry, I was still reading the parking thing.
If, if, if parcels F, G, and H, the single family, if they are generally the same lot size, what is the lot size?
Um, it would be I believe it would be anywhere from 5,500 to 6,500.
Can I note, digress a little bit, but you remember offhand what the lot size is of the property that we discussed last week, I think down closer, closer to 50th, that, that development, what those lot sizes.
Um, they were, they requested R160. So they would be, I think they were saying they were going to do up to 70, 75 foot lots. So probably 7,500 to 10,000 square feet for those.
So D is 50, E is 50, F is 55, G is 60, and H is 65.
Thank you for that.
I guess my questions would be more along the front here by Beardsley, A, B, and C. And I know as we do these UDs, the idea is to try to get the best fit on the property that we can or the best developments that we can. But that's also taken into consideration the existing areas that are around it. You know, trying to find the best apartment we can. And it doesn't, it doesn't sound like we've found that yet. Now, I guess in my mind, I'm wondering that, you know, we have a long parcel D here that's single family homes. And from what I can understand from most of the comments of the residents to the north, if those single family homes could somehow be what they look across and see on Beardsley. And these other structures were somehow behind that, but probably before Plains Avenue. Sounds to me like that was probably better fit into the area, the existing, you know, residences. Now, I think it's a good layout for this development, you know, the way it's laid out. It looks pretty good for this development. But not so good for the residences across Beardsley. But we should be able to make, should be able to get it worked out here that, you know, we can find a happy medium in here and be able to maybe just rearrange things on the north end towards Beardsley. I, I just want to comment that I like the intent of the developer having diversified housing, you know, in the development. I really do. Because we've been struggling trying to bring in housing that was more workforce type housing. And it's just harder than heck to do because the buildings cost so much now. And so this offers us an opportunity to be able to do that. I'd like to be able to see if we could make it work successfully. And and I like the approach of the different kinds of housing kind of mixed into the same development. I think that's a real positive for you, not a bad. That, that's where I'm at, Mayor, is I struggle with the north end of that and how it lines up, what lines up with Beardsley.
All right. Any other comments? We're still in public hearing.
No, I don't have any other.
All right. What, do we have any written or comments specific to this item that we haven't already covered?
Not that we have not already covered.
Okay, great. Do we have any other public comment that might be new?
Les Bruner, 559 Beardsley. Looking at.
For this one, we are gonna, we, since we've talked a lot already, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and put a three minute.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I just have a couple of quick comments regarding what, what Ed just spoke in regard to the parcel D. I, I guess I feel like that's kind of what our concept, we understand that we're, we're not going to move multiple family dwellings out of this, this plan altogether. But we're looking, we were looking for something a little bit more conducive to what the residents are on the north side of the street. And, you know, these, these, this parcel D is already going to be bordering multiple family dwellings to the east. And we really, at this time, I mean, I don't know what's going to be on the west side of this development. I'm sure some of you might already know that, but it just seems like that might be conducive, moving that to the front of the development next to Beardsley. And then sliding the multiple family dwellings back beyond that might be a good, might be a good fit, might be something that would Appease the, the, the residents of the community and, and I guess fit the aesthetics of, of what uh, what we're hoping for, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
McFouts five-seventy-five Beardsley, um, first off, I just wanna tell you guys that Luke has been a great help. On that sewer project, so I want you guys to realize that he has been a great help on that sewer project, so. But as I mentioned before, I want you guys to realize too that we all helped the community, not just the area, you know, south of Beardsley. But we also helped other areas inside of Norwalk with that sewer, number one. Number two is, you know, might be mentioned maybe by the developer, maybe brought up, maybe somebody on the council. The adjacent Shadow Creeks, it's like, well, hey, they were able to put their, their condos, townhouses or whatnot up by the road, but. I just wanna reiterate what I said before, I would have been here and, and the residents would have been here too. If we would have known about that particular hearing, but once again, no sign, no letter, you can check with other people, so. I, I'm, I'm in agreement, hey, if we can work on flipping it, that'd be great, thanks.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and close public hearing.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Adam Grub nine thirty-five sixty-six west of Des Moines, Luke, I said, so. I think there's some challenges based on the way this drains in the sewer with, as it pertains to having that road along that front. I think it would be very unique in terms of planning to push the multifamily off of Main Street. I, I'm not to say that it can't be done, but I would just say that I've not seen that done. Um, and other communities and other developments, I did send an image, it was like a lone image maybe in a second email. Um, that I think is worth, I do wanna reiterate. You know, the, the comprehensive plan does have the R three along Beardsley. And I think the planning over time within the community has wanted to have that R three along Beardsley. So what we tried to do in that is design something that had the front facade, the most aesthetic part of the front facade facing Beardsley.
This is the one you're talking.
Yeah, so in the end, the fifty-foot lots are villas and the fear is these two stories towering over the neighbors, but the reality is. It's gonna be flat back. Two stories towering over the neighbors, you know, this, this is the back facade of a single family house. Where in the row homes, what we're doing is making that front facade and the entrance and a, and a walkway all the way from the front along Beardsley. Being the most aesthetic part. To fit that, to fit that Beardsley, so I guess I just wanted to provide that if we do the villas along Beardsley. I think you'd have some logistical issues as you butt up to the cross street that goes all the way through. And then I think in terms of the draining in the streets, I think there's also some reconfiguration. But I do think, I really strongly think aesthetically, the front facade of those along Beardsley is more aesthetically pleasing than the back of a two-story house.
Did you have something else? Okay, no, before you sit down. I'll tell you straight up what my issue is, and I want you to have an opportunity to respond if you want to. Is I have been opposed. With all of the development going on along Beardsley, uh, putting. Residences on top of a hill on Hurricane Al, I mean tornado alley without storm shelter or basement. That's my issue.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the parcel C is not a brownstone, just to clarify, that one is more of a townhome product. So in other places that we've built it, we've done both, right? We've offered like a more zero entry for folks that, that wanna take advantage of that. Within there, we've also mixed in like a biattach that does have basements, so in parcel C, we have in other communities done a variety of both. On the slabbing grade, we have not. And ultimately, that is just an ability to be able to hit that price point. There's been a time historically where that was there, you know, but I figure on that basement, I think today. With a found, I mean, it's, it's a significant cost, it's more than ten percent.
Yeah, I, I understand and I respect that.
Yeah.
But understand my position.
Yeah, I hear.
When, when these houses or, or buildings go down because of a tornado and we lose residents because of a tornado. That is a greater cost than the cost to a developer of putting in a basement, I, I totally understand what you're saying. I want just, you know where I'm coming from and why. Why I'm not gonna support it. So I just want, again, I wanted you to have an opportunity to respond, um, if you wanted to respond, but that's kinda where I'm at.
Are you in support if they all have basement?
I am.
Um, I guess I would just offer on, on the slab on grades, I, I do think you priced too many folks out of the market. In your ability to be able to meet that demand, I would offer those other places throughout Norwalk and obviously a lot of places throughout the community. That do provide a brownstone with a slab on grade. Um, and then I also think there is a need for folks that do want that zero entry. Certainly in a ranch style townhome, that's what, we have it as a smaller parcel for that reason. But I do think that's a great demand in the city of Norwalk where we don't have anything that meets that needs of folks that would want that zero entry. And honestly, we have so many folks that come from Des Moines, that's where we have that, our current, you know, townhome project that we do that. And we just have had so much demand for that and not just for folks that want the zero entry, but frankly, kind of across the board.
And I do think that there are places in our city that that's more appropriate, I don't, not up on a hill. In, in the middle of nothing, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I, like I said, I understand and I respect this.
Well, and my only counter is I think, you know, I continue to go back to the comprehensive plan that has the R three zoning. This is really the textbook product to be, is able to meet that demand. And the overwhelming, I would offer more than ninety percent of the market right now is a slab on grade, row home specific to that product, and I think that'll.
Anybody else? Sorry, is this new? No, is this new? Yes, is this new?
Greg Tice five-six-three Beardsley, I think the, Mr. Grub stated that he felt like the um. Aesthetics of a two-story apartment-like building was better to look at than the backyard of a single-family home. Did I hear that correctly? Have I heard that correctly?
I said townhomes.
Oh, okay, town, whatever is proposed, it was like that was better to look at in the backyard of a residential home. I strongly disagree, and I think if you took, asked the neighborhood what they would like to see, I think they'd pick backyards, thank you.
Anybody else, one last time. Going once, going twice. We're close public hearing, public hearing at eight fifty-eight P M. All right, item seven F, first reading in order submitting the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by rezoning land south of West Beardsley Street. From AR, across reserve to the Hacking Hills Plan Unit Development, so. PUD is actually an ordinance, so we're, we need to have three readings of the PUD, this is just the first one. I would like to change the garage requirement within the PUD. For the second reading, uh, if we have a second reading. What discussion do we have from council?
I've got one thing and I want Mr. Grub to come back up, sorry. Just cuz you're, cuz this, and mine gets two side setbacks and five and five don't make much beside yard and I don't like them, so. Yeah, and the single families, the five and five is a killer. If you, if you're doing five and five, that puts ten feet between homes and that's too close for me, so. I think in other places we've had five and seven, I know it's only two feet and it sounds, it sound like very much, but it is a lot in my mind, so that's where I sit back and say five and five is a killer.
Yeah, um, you know, I guess what I'd offer is, is. At the end of the day. I think throughout the entire country, every municipality is tasked with finding ways to offer housing that people can afford. And right now, folks don't wanna give up square footage, they don't wanna give up the amenities, so they're willing to give up the lot size. And. As we get into the larger pots into the fifties and six, or I would call maybe the sixties. The biggest thing in the five-foot side yards on the sixties is it allows for a third car garage, I mean, that at the end of the day is probably the biggest thing. On the fifties though, um, it just honestly really comes down to the ability to be able to offer a price point. And I think you see that throughout the metro and I think we're seeing that throughout the entire country right now.
And I don't like fifty-foot lots either, so I guess I'm just, it, just so you know, that's why I, I don't like the five-foot setbacks, I have not, not ever liked them. And five on five doesn't work, it's, I think where I've been okay with in the past is where it's been five at seven or five at eight.
What, can you kind of unpack that a little bit, what do you mean, like five on one side, so what do you mean by that?
So, so it's a five with a minimum, so, so you have five on one side and eight on the other, and then this house has five, so you have five and eight together, so you've got thirteen feet instead of. And again, you get down to a couple feet and you throw a couple air conditioners on the side of the house and you are adding just more things. I'm sure our fire department would love to have to drive through if they ever needed to.
Yeah, I, I just, there's just too many things with it and, and five with five doesn't match. Where I, I, I understand it gets all back to develop the lots, I don't like fifty-foot lots when I don't pay with them, I'll live with them, but I don't like. And it gets down to, how many lots can I squeeze on here so I can sell more lots? And that's the frustration for me is that you, you say, you, you say differently, you say, how many lots can I get so I can get it down to an affordable price? And I say, how many lots can you get to sell more? Um, I see two, it's, it's a matter of looking at, we're looking at the same thing, but we have different perspectives on it and that's. Yeah, you know, but when you start throwing five-foot, five-foot setbacks, side two, it's too close. I, I certainly think we're open to the consideration, in, in a lot of it comes down to balance. I think we're heavier on the fifties, right? I think if there's a willingness on that front and that R three zoning. To maybe look at modifying that balance, I think that'd be something, but I would request that we have the ability to do some. Because it is more of a villa type, you know, of a home that we're trying to address that fits into that R three zone.
I wonder, I, I would like to see this development happen, sorry, maybe it needs to be massage a little bit. What, what would the, just asking friends, but what would the rest of council think? If we motion to table this for now. And give the staff an opportunity to work with the developer through the issues that we have. To see if it's possible to resolve some of those things. I mean, what, what do you, what do you fellows think?
I think it sounds like that might be the best bet for this to go forward.
Okay. I'm sorry.
What issues are you looking to resolve specifically to that?
Well, I think the issue of having some kind of basement or shelter may be available to it. The issue of the side yard, you know, separation, and my issue on uh trying to. Relax a little bit, maybe rearrange what's on the Beardsley end, so it's more compatible with neighbors around it. You know, see if there's a way to do that. And, and to be able to be successful with having a project. I mean, I'm not desiring to kill the development, that's how it's in my mind, I, I just wanna make it something to be best.
Ed, just for clarification, when you say possibly the frontage on Beardsley, are you referring to moving the high density further south?
Yeah, and. The, the single family is there on the side, right, and looking at that, and I understand what you're saying about the sewer and the drainage. But there should be a way to be able to take that, slide that across the front, smooth the dirt. And then you create a space, there should be a way to rearrange those squares. Because it's the same amount of space, right? Back behind that row, right? Without infringing on the, the traditional development you got on the south side, there should be a way to do that. And that would make everything, I think, fit together, as far as fitting. You know, I don't know, I, I mean, I. How you address the other two issues, maybe do that by layout, I, you know, I don't know. But uh, I, I like to give them a chance to see can you do it.
I really appreciate what you did with the frontage along Beardsley with the. Town hall.
Yeah.
That you were actually fronting the, the fronts of the town halls actually.
Yeah.
I, I think. Is, is there a way you can extend that? And then move everything back. I, and, and that, that, that would solve.
I, I think, I think.
I think you're on the path. On the map here, sorry. Taking parcel A.
Yeah, look at this.
And getting it off right here and putting this product here, cuz then you're facing, putting the product that.
Yeah.
It's like a house facing Beardsley instead of the apartment condo slash whatever. I really wanna see you be successful.
Common use and I'm happy.
We're gonna have to come back. I wrote down basement. Yeah, in, in, I, 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 in a very unique time for this community and fully understand, right? And, and I'm, I'm not opposed on the slab on, you know, on the brownstones. It, it just, I, I authentically feel that in, in a big way, you start to price folks out. I think you start to price them out of that market and it's probably been about twenty, Hubble's probably the last person I can think of in Greenwood Crossing in Milwaukee. You know, where they did that and they offered that basement. You know, without a basement finisher, twenty grand, and with a basement finisher, another thirty, forty. And just in this current pricing environment, there's that challenge, I guess I would, like, what is an alternative? Is there an alternative to, like, in terms of the slab as far as safety? You know what I mean, like, I wouldn't want that for, you know what I mean, like, if it was my family, like, what, you know what I'm saying, like, I, I'm trying to understand that a little better.
Right, and so when I said, you know, build a common use cellar, I mean, I, is there any way that you can? Build one. Structure that. Allows people to shelter if there's a storm.
Yeah, I, I almost, where my mind go, I guess I'd wanna, I think I'd, I wanna look at it, I'd be curious. Um, because I think there's other ways, I think there could be potentially other ways to have. Some, some protection there that I think would be interesting, kind of understanding.
If you create a clubhouse, it's a shelter, I don't know, that might be good.
Yeah. The, and, and I will offer this, you know, the reason we came with the PUD is we wanted the diversification of product types. Specific to the, to the condos, right? As opposed to going to an R three zoning and an R one sixty and, and coming at this this way. I think certainly we don't have a full council here tonight, obviously. I'm open to that dialogue, I mean, the reason we went that PUD round is we understand that to give and take, we understand that's a dialogue, we understand we want that to be a win-win. And. I guess our kind of two options would be to scrap the PUD and start over. Or see if there's an opportunity to be able to modify the PUD and maybe we get down the PD route and we can't get there and we gotta go a different route. You know, but certainly, I got a lot invested that I would like to, you know, yeah, let's put something in here.
Yeah, it's worth taking the time to take a look.
Yeah, and, but I, I guess, you know, the reason we had the PUD route was because of parcel A. The thing I really wanna offer though is we went along with. The comprehensive plan and the future land use map that has that R three along Beardsley. You know, and that was the intent, that was the use, and I think that's always been the use. And, and that's been available to everybody. And so we're, we're not coming to change that. We're coming to try to provide something that really fits that vision. And I believe very much that our row homes are the most ideal thing to hit that, which is why I come back to when I had over 100 agents in my office, is 81 up to the record. 81 agents, you know, so many of them asked me about that product because there is such a need. And when you look at the city of Norwalk. Beardsley is, is, it is a main access road. It's accessibility and there is some limitations to where the community has. And I think that's what was identified in the comprehensive plan. Is that Beardsley is a limited asset that the community has to be able to put this NBR. And it's not our goal to maximize it. I, we're open to the discussion to be able to have a balance that works. So I guess I would just open to that. If we feel the best route is to table it and, and we can work with staff in, in having that discussion. And certainly open to that. And if, if we start over, we start over. So.
I don't think you need to start over.
We should be able to make it work now.
Yeah.
Alright. So what do you want to do?
Are you looking for a motion, Mayor, or?
Maybe table it?
I would make a motion to table this.
Yes, 8:58 PM.
Yeah, we're good. Okay. I might make a motion to table this this time.
For a certain date or just have it open ended.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll, I think it'll, I think. Stay on top of it to bring it back. I'm not, I don't think it's gonna die. But I also think you have. Some idea of what. Thoughts are.
Yeah.
And you'll look at whether or not you can explore some options.
Okay, so motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston to table. Lindsay would call.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Alright.
Most Carol agreed.
Yes. Item 7G is special event application for 4th of July fireworks at Mackinac Park. Here the application, council, since we have a council member who is the applicant for addressing this in regular agenda.
Hey, don't have to leave now.
I'm starving too. We're here another hour and a half.
Aw man, they're not staying for fireworks.
I don't, I don't know where I'm at. So, but Lindsay's gonna call and you stay, same statement. Any discussion, question? Okay. Any public comments?
Can I motion?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reba. Any further discussion? Lindsay would call roll.
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Upstate. Oh, we can't have that. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Did anybody call?
Yes.
Did it carry?
Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ooh, it's getting late.
We're good.
7, 8. Is a resolution approving and authorizing the acquisition property in interest for the Beardsley Street and Highway 28 improvement project. So for the inner, for the intersection improvements, Beardsley and Highway, Beardsley and Highway 28. We're gonna need more right of way than one is currently available. Project engineer is currently working on the design and determining how much right of way is gonna be needed and from whom. Due to the importance of the project, we're going to take steps to make sure we get the needed right of way within the timeframes. Needed to make the project successful. Wayne?
Perfect.
Thank you. Even though I'm tired.
Alright.
What, what questions do you guys have?
So does this. Authorize? The actual acquisition or does the amount that we may be acquiring it for have to come back?
The amount, so for the, to the purchase of the right of way would have to come back. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. All my questions.
Anything else? Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry.
No. Any public comment? Okay, so did I get it? Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reba. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay would call roll.
Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker. I'm sorry, Reba.
She's getting tired too. Motion carries. Item 7I is resolution to approve the updated fiscal year 23 salary matrix. So this is a big item. I'm tired and I don't want to misstate anything. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Arian Lou.
Yeah, thank you. So the salary matrix that is in the packet that we're asking for approval, this is based on the compensation study that, that 6585. Did for us as well as the methodology and all the information that was presented last council meeting. Looking at the salary matrix, there is a few things I want to note. One, there's a typo. It says effective July 1, 2023. No, that's July 1, 2022. And then also you'll notice that the library and union positions aren't included on the matrix. As you know, with unions, that's through their union contracts. So they're, they won't be on that matrix. And then. The library board of trustees sets the library wages. So those aren't on there yet. I have, I'm gonna attend the library board meeting on Monday and kind of go through the process that, that. We utilized our methodology and talked to them about their, what their wages should be.
And we should give an award to the library board press president, Stephanie, that's here at the meeting. Along with Sarah, that's also on the board.
What questions do you guys have for me?
So. The library wages were included, just to clarify.
Yes.
Included in the study.
Correct.
They're not in this matrix because you're going to board on Monday to get it all.
Right, because, yes, because the library board will set their, their wages other than the city council.
And then how are we paying for wage increases?
Right, so.
That's a great question and we will have a great answer for you when those proposals come forward.
Thank you.
It does include the library in that as well, even though it's a separate board making that decision. But I will just let you know, the conversations that I have had with Gene, it is an all encompassing, and we're looking at the changes essentially. It's been non-union. Adjustments. So it has included discussions with the library and all the others as far as how to finance it. But ultimately that decision for the library.
The document before still just sets the pay line.
Correct. And I do want everybody to understand that by you taking action to approve this salary matrix. While that there is no specific cost to that. We put in that agenda statement to make sure you understand that will lead to us coming back saying, okay, now where do we want our staff to be within these ranges? That is where there is a cost association. And we will have a strategy of how to do that. Whether it takes us six months or five years, we will have a strategy and how to.
That's the spirit.
Whatever questions? Any public comments? Hearing none. Motion by Reba, seconded by Livingston. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay would call roll.
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Item 7J is first and possibly more readings of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 22-09. Providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the February 2022 addition to the Norwalk urban renewal area. So we just added this property. Into the urban renewal area. But legal council has now indicated it would be better to approve the area separately, which is gonna allow the city to start reclaiming TIF earlier. So we need to just repeal the ordinance we just passed and we'll have new ordinances at a future meeting. Is that right, Gene?
Yes, just we'll have two separate tip districts, one for sports parks, its building and the turf pods. And then a separate one for the surrounding retail commercial because they'll get done at different times.
Okay. Awesome. What questions?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lester, seconded by Livingston. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay would call roll.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Reba to waive second, third reading, seconded by Lester, Lindsay would call roll.
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for doing that. I would have forgotten.
I don't believe it.
I don't make council inquiries and staff updates. Jim? David?
I will make this very quick, I promise. The state passed a law related to temporary and permanent fireworks sales, if you're not aware. It removes my ability to use any of our zoning tools to regulate those. Our, the way we regulate them and our permitting is all through zoning. So we currently do not have the ability to use any of that. So. That's the thing that's happening. So right now we think we know.
She did sign it.
We think we know that everyone that was here last year is planning on being here. We luckily will know who is allowed via the state fires marshal's database. That chief porter has access to. So if we see somebody that's not on that list, then we probably have some ability to say, get out of town. But other than that, hands are really tight. Sorry.
Uh, just wanted to say our mechanic position has been filled. They start on Monday.
Yay.
Alright.
Yeah, very exciting. Thank you.
Nothing, thanks.
I got a notification today that we got $20,928 from DTSP. For traffic enforcement overtime and equipment. And I'll bring the council agenda statement ahead for that probably later this summer. Takes the state a while to actually come up with the money. But they'll tell you they're gonna give to you quickly. And then today we promoted two people, Sergeant Officer Ben Lewiston and Andrew Reed. Interestingly enough, after thinking back on it, in the 48 and a half year history of the Norwalk Police Department, that is only the fifth and sixth person to ever be promoted to sergeant. And it was a big day. Cause not only was it, doesn't happen very often. It hasn't happened in 13 years. That's all.
Thank you, Gene.
Really important. In a couple of weeks, I'm gonna bring a presentation. We're gonna, we need to borrow money for our CFP, mainly Norwalk Central. Try to be really fast. Interest rates are going up. As you know, probably will recommend we borrow more money this year instead of separating into two separate issues. Due to the, the environment right now. So I'll bring that to you probably in a slide presentation in two weeks.
Just real quick, don't forget the used book sale is at the library next Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. I think I gave everyone a flyer. And thank you to city and to Carrie for including the library in the wage survey and study and all of the other processes. Much appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you.
April 27th was our Earth Day Arbor Day celebration. We planted 55 trees and we still have 34 more to plant. So Elizabeth Holland City Park, Pine Eagle Park and Mackinac Sports Complex. Um, were part of the tree planting project. The pool is caffeinated with a re-plaster process. We are delayed because of rain unfortunately. To remove the plaster, it can be raining, but to put new plaster on it has to be dry. So. Also next week, the Aquatics Center parking lot will. Will be receiving some repairs and we are still in desperate need. Lifeguards and school instructors. So. If anybody cares me and has anybody 15 and older that wants to be a lifeguard, we will treat them and we have jobs.
I hope that bears fruit.
What's that pay, buddy?
Lifeguards are $12 an hour.
Thank you.
You looking to join?
No, I'm thinking about recruiting some grandkids. I think they meet that age gap. I got enough to do now.
Lindsay?
No, sir.
Jack?
Just really quick, I would like us to put on the agenda for a discussion, maybe a work session in the near future. The, oh, discussion about our logo. Ben. Some discussion about it changing. There are some groups working on some designs that. Maybe acting as if it's changing. I don't know who has the authority to change it or not. I think it comes back before council.
You have the authorities.
I think we should probably have a discussion and at least all be on the same page about where this is headed.
Alright. I'll wait to see the look right now.
Yes.
The county, I notified all of the council members about the ARPA award that we received from Warren County Supervisors. But this is more to let the public know, about a $1.45 million economic development grant. It'll go towards infrastructure for certified site. Two votes were yes, one was no, but I firmly believe that Supervisor Heater, being a representative of his area, is the Indianola area. It was a competitive grant. I don't think it's that he necessarily thought ours was a bad project. I think he just felt like more dollars should have went to Indianola. I haven't had that discussion with Supervisor Heater, but I'm just confident that was probably somewhere involved in this discussion.
Only thing I had is. May 14th. Not this coming Saturday, but following Saturday is community chat. We're gonna be in here 9 o'clock. Come join us. Good time. That's all I got. So. Item verification for the closed sessions that we're gonna go through. We're talking about four different properties tonight. So we're gonna have four different closed sessions, one for each property. The reason for this, because if we enter into an agreement to actually purchase or sell prop, the property. The recording of that closed session opens up and becomes public. So, uh, I think we really want to get through the first two. If you want to delay one or both the other closed sessions, because it is getting late, just let me know. So item nine is enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.51J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. Only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property. This valid reasons going to closed session? Yes, this. Alright, can I get a motion moving closed session? Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reba. Lindsay would call roll.
Yes. Go in, right? Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry. Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker. I'm sorry. Reba? Cool?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. We're gonna go into closed session. It is 9:28 PM, so. We'll get going here in a couple of minutes. Let people leave and we'll let Lindsay change the recorder.